Meeting to order. Mr. Placko, can you call roll?
Lori Kreniski.
Here.
Belinda Gracie.
Here.
Denise Brewster.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Dennis Keen.
Here.
Can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 4, 2024. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keen.
Aye.
Lori Kreniski.
Aye.
Belinda Gracie.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to tonight's special reports.
Lori, the...
Oh, I apologize. So I make a motion to add a resolution to amend the agenda to revise or add resolutions related to executive session. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we just have some resolutions that'll go on before we go out to executive session that pertain to that specific executive session. So that's what we'll do at the end, right before going into executive session.
We have two, correct?
Two, yes.
Did you receive that from legal counsel early this afternoon? Just like the last minute.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Lori Kreniski.
Aye.
Belinda Gracie.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Dennis Keen.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, now that brings us to special reports.
All right, we have three tonight. Really excited about these. First up, I'd like to invite Mr. Arlesik, our Director of Maintenance, to share a kind of update on facilities grounds in the busy summer that he has had.
Busy, it's been slow. I've not had much to do.
Sure.
Do you want me to clip for you or...?
Sure. I would love to. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, some of this is, you may have heard last year, but some of the items I'll go over, but we, in our strategic plan, we have a Culture and Wellness Committee. It's headed by our HR Director, Mallory Aleth. And the teachers and myself that were in this group, we decided that we were going to try something different to put ownership into the school and make some more pride in moving forward. So we had 25 staff members who were 10-month employees who decided to work for the summer. Most of them were made up of teachers. Couple of them were nutritional aides, some of them were educational aides. They worked very flexible hours. We're going to be flexible for them so they can enjoy some of their summer. But we had staff at Buckeye, Lamuth, Parkside, River View, and campus. And in that work, we did landscaping, which at Buckeye, we had one teacher, she moved 16 yards of mulch and spread it by herself. She was always dirty from head to toe, but she was smiling the whole time. I probably should learn how to do that from her. We painted five classrooms. They were intricate with our custodial staff in cleaning and prepping classrooms. As everybody knows, we moved from Hale Road, we moved five classrooms, so the custodial staff moved five classrooms in an office from Hale. They then took the furniture and items to their classrooms at either Buckeye or Melridge. The maintenance and custodial staff worked together to move the classrooms from Buckeye and Melridge that were fifth grade and moved them to Lamuth. And then the teachers, the custodian staff, worked together to shift the classrooms around and get them back in order, in order to have fifth grade now at Lamuth. Again, my custodial staff knocked stop the park. We have 11 weeks off from the day we graduate, but in all told, we have eight and a half to nine weeks to clean all of our schools. And we still do not have it all to ourselves, so there are challenges, but they hit it out of the park as they normally do. Just to give you an idea of what they've done, they moved 1,350 desks, 4,180 tables, 7,017 chairs. They cleaned 82 bathrooms, cleaned 166 toilets, 110 sinks, and 87 urinals. On top of that, they also go into the classrooms, and you'll see in a couple of the slides, all the furniture comes out. So the custodial staff moves the furniture out, and while it's in the hallway, it gets cleaned. The teachers also assist in doing that, and some of our subs as well, but it's mainly the custodial staff in each schools. Once the floors are top scrubbed or stripped, they're waxed, the furniture then goes back in the order that it came out. In every classroom, they go and enable draw on the chalkboard or on the whiteboard, exactly how it was. So when the teacher comes back, it's ready for them, and then they can tweak it how they would like. Also, between cleaning all of the bathrooms and the hallways and burnishing them, we also painted the fieldhouse floors. They were intricate in painting the boys' and girls' first-floor high school bathroom, the men's and ladies' auditorium bathroom, and then the boys' and girls' bathroom that is next to the John R. cafeteria. Along with that, we also painted the John R., or not, the fieldhouse blackroom floors. So that was done as well amidst all the other cleaning, as far as carpet cleaning, cleaning bleachers, cleaning the glass on the basketball hoops, and anything else that you could think of that we may have to do to get school ready. Maintenance also plays a big role. We added isolation valves at Lamuth. So what we ran into with some of the problems was that if we had issues with some of our heating units locking up with air bubbles, we couldn't bleed them. So what we did is we went into the classrooms, the supply lines up in the ceiling, they drained the system, cut the lines, put in supply valve or ball valves, and then we put in bleeder units, so now we can get that air out and get the heat to flow more evenly through the school. We also added shut-off valves here at the high school and in John R. So in the event that we have a water issue in a bathroom or a sink or toilet, instead of shutting the school down, we can go ahead and isolate that area, work on that area, get it done as quickly as possible during the school day, and not disrupt school or classes throughout the day. We also went through all of our HVAC units on the roofs. What they do is they clean the vents and the fin tubes up on top, they check the operation of the motor and the valves to make sure that those units will work properly. We do what we can. They are man-made units, so anything man-made is prone to fail, so we have had some failures this year, but we worked through it as quickly as possible, and they do a great job. Kind of to give you an idea, on top of that, of doing all the maintenance that we do and the custodial work we do, we still have to maintain roughly 82 acres of grass that we have to cut. That's not the total acreage that we have in the district, but that's what we cut. That has to be done weekly. So the mowers are moving, and the weed whackers are running, and the blowers are going as well. So they maintained that as well. And on top of keeping it cut, and with the track project that we had going on this year, they had to line and lay out four football fields on a weekly basis to make sure that the paint was down. It's an athletic-type paint. We get it from Pioneer. They also had to do the soccer field and the band practice field as well on a weekly basis. And it basically comes out to, every time we lay down lines, it's 20 gallons. If you go to the lecture hall in the high school, the main lobby of the high school, the Lamuth choir room and the Lamuth band room, they all have new ceiling tiles. Some of the rooms, like the lecture hall and the choir room at Lamuth, the metal track was painted white because it was very stained and yellowing. Other ones, the tracks were nice enough that we put in the tiles, but we ended up putting in 1,572 tiles, and it actually looks remarkable. It makes a big difference. When you see the lecture hall, you'll just be blown away how well it looks, in my opinion. We also did what has been a very hot topic and very talked about to death is, and I'm very glad that it has happened, we have new stalls in the boys' and girls' high school first-floor bathroom. We have new stalls in the men's and ladies' auditorium bathrooms, and we have new stalls in the boys' and girls' first-floor John R. bathroom closest to the cafeteria. Custodial did go through and deep-clean them. We used an enzyme cleaner to remove as much crud as we could from the walls and the floors and around the toilets. Once the stalls were tore out, maintenance went through, they bolted and screwed and tightened all the sinks, all the faucets, all the flush handles, all the toilets, all the urinals, back down. If it was a broken toilet, which we only had one, we replaced it, the rest was just cleaned deeply, and we did, the custodial staff did paint. So we have brand-new stalls, a little bit of an upgrade as far as painting and getting things operational. We hope to do more next year. There was a little bit of things going on this year that kind of, you know, sidetracked us as deep into it as we wanted to get. The baseball field and the softball field for Varsity, they have a new surface. The track, the morning track around the Varsity baseball field was also done. It was treated twice during the process with a pre-emergent and emergent agricultural spray for weeds. We do have an extensive list of do's and don'ts from the installer, which we will be adhering to very, very strictly. And they actually drain very, very well. The installer has stated that after two hours, after you get a heavy rain, we should be able to do a light drag of the field, and it should be playable. So we're really hoping that, from what we've seen so far with the runoff, that it is very awesome for playing this year. Real quick, a couple other items I didn't put on here. We also, through the summer, I make sure, and I go through with the fire departments, which we have Painesville Township, and we have Concord. They were at all the schools when we did the testing, so all fire testing was done. So all devices, pole stations, fire extinguishers, heat sensors, Halon system, smoke detectors, duct detectors, those were all checked, all passed. Our horns and strobes went off as they should, so that was signed off by both fire departments. Grease traps for all the kitchens were just cleaned last week, so they are ready to go for the kitchens. All of our sanitary sewers in the parking lots, if we have them, were vacuumed out this week as well. And that's pretty much about it, except for my one little goofy fact that I have that I'd share with you, is that during the track restoration that we have going on currently, and it's wrapping up very soon, we had 55,000 square feet of track surface milled 1 and 1/2 inches. That asphalt weighs 145 pounds per cubic foot. We had 6,875 cubic feet of material, which equates to 254 cubic yards, and that equaled 996,875 pounds, or 498 tons of material. And you're asking, why are you giving this to us? We had the opportunity to get free grindings, which is 998... How many tons is it? 498 tons of free material. We spread that out in the campus parking lot for buses. We spread it out at the Historical Society parking as well for our buses. We also filled in holes at turns around the various schools in our district for free. We did have manpower, but what we typically spend is almost $5,000 or $6,000 in gravel a year. This stuff went down. We mixed it in very well. It's hardening very nicely. We also did some work on the road leading up to the baseball fields, so we took great advantage of getting 498 tons of free material. And that's my report. Up here, you have all the new stalls. They are phenolic material. They are graffiti-proof. They look nice. Down below, on the left there, you'll see, that is the Buckeye sign out front before any work was done by the staff, the teachers. Afterwards, you see what it looks like now. It actually looks fantastic. As I said, we painted some classrooms. The music room and the band room over in John R. did receive new carpeting. That looks great as well. The custodians also painted the band room, and Mr. Schwartz and company are very pleased with how it looks. We pulled up carpeting at Melridge. You can see that there's still the glue over the top of the tiles. The custodial staff went ahead and stripped off the glue, so we can get new carpeting put down. Picture next to that is all the furniture that has been pulled out of a classroom and into the hallway, prepping the classrooms, cleaning the classrooms, and then all that furniture, as you see, gets cleaned, and then when the wax is dry, it all goes back in. You have some of the carpet that we ripped out of the four modular classrooms at Buckeye. That's the old modular units. They got brand-new carpeting as well. Down to the bottom left is the band room set up with the new carpeting. And then we have a teacher at Lamuth putting together furniture. And then you see next to that is all the furniture waiting to be put together or moved in the Lamuth cafeteria. And again, I will say very thank you to my staff, custodians, maintenance, courier. And again, like I said last year, I will put them up against anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask two quick questions?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for doing the bathrooms. They look fabulous. Was there a problem moving the original partitions?
No, they actually, once they came out of their boring, they crumbled.
Okay, okay. I just wondered how that went.
If you wanted a cutting block, they didn't recommend it.
Yeah. No, no. And the ceiling tiles in the front hall of the Riverside entrance, I know a lot of students painted things, were those relocated?
No, we did not touch any of those.
Oh, you did not touch?
No, we did not.
Oh, okay.
No, we did not touch anything of students.
Okay, I just wonder, because people enjoy looking at those.
No, we did not.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, it is August, so we're going to go through the strategic plan update. A little bit of history on our strategic plan. Our strategic plan was adopted in the summer of 2022, with the 2022-23 year being the first year of implementation. Year two of implementation has seen a lot of positive work towards meeting the identified priorities and action steps in the plan. Tonight, I'm going to show some highlights of each of the strategic areas, along with measuring progress. We're measuring the progress of our improvement towards that plan with survey data, achievement data, and other points along the way, and then give some recommendations as we move through the midpoint of our plan. So the first major strategic area is safety, climate, and wellness. In safety, climate, and wellness, we have three basic strategic initiatives. Develop staff celebration and support program. Proactively identify at-risk students and create programming to address disciplinary health. And then increase communication and shared decision-making, and increase safety. The pictures that are on this wall, kind of hit some of the other, are on this slide, hit some of the other points, and the one in bold is the one that we're going to get to for each of the areas. So I kind of wanted to pick one area of this plan and kind of hit on it. But you can see that we've done some things to work with our staff celebrations. We had that end of the year picnic. We talk about, you know, increasing safety. Obviously, the vestibules are a big thing to that at our legacy buildings. And then also communication and shared decision-making. We've got our DLT and our BLT, who've done a lot, and business advisory, that have done a lot of work for some of the initiatives we've pushed forward. So talking specifically about the at-risk students and creating programming to address disciplinary health on our plan, this is one that we look at, kind of what have we done? And what can we do, and how can we measure it? So we hired a district behavior coach who works with Tier 1 and Tier 2 PBIS supports. She's been fantastic in working with our teachers. We've provided targeted training for staff to build empathy and develop positive relationships into scheduled times built throughout the school day. So we've identified that these relationships are needed in our classes, and every building and everyone has a time for students to meet and work and to kind of have a go-to person and an advisory, and have some of those interventions and enrichments, but have that time to develop empathy with all. One of the things we use to measure our strategic plan and the impact was a survey, a staff survey that kind of focuses on the strategic plan. And the one question I highlighted here is, our staff has a skill to deal with student disciplinary problems. This is one where we did see, there's still some work to be done. 60, roughly 60%, 70%, at least slightly agree, if not strongly agree. But in the comments on that survey, there was still, we need more, we need some help, we need supports with some of the most severe discipline problems. When you look at the graph on the bottom, that is state discipline data that we have to report annually to the state for each year for the number of discipline incidents that we report. These are things, these are major discipline incidents, so out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions. In 2021 and 2022, those numbers are low due to COVID, remote learning, other areas like that. But '22, '23, and '24 were the ones we're going to focus on. In '22 and '23, we had 470 and 473 incidents district-wide. This is K to 12. This year, we are reporting actually 392, so we are seeing a decrease in some of these with the strategies and the behavior strategy we put in place with our plan. The other one that really kind of does impact, that is student attendance. And attendance in Ohio is measured in two ways. It's measured in attendance rate, the percentage of how often students are actually in the classroom, as well as this chronic absenteeism rate, or the number of students who are, who miss 10% of the school year, 65 hours or more. When you look at from last year to this year, our attendance rate is, it stayed the same. We went from 92.8 to 92.9. That's not a change at all. It's pretty much negligent because it's within the standard of error. Our chronic absenteeism rate did go up a little bit. That's something that we are targeting this year to make students want to be here, as well as kind of the way we report. That kind of comes from, too, some of the ways that our classes work at the campus with scheduling students into classes and not necessarily in the study halls, who they might have to leave before or after. You know, they have first block study hall, fourth block study hall, but they can't get here all the time late, so they don't qualify for early release or late arrival and early release. They are marked as absent, and that counts towards this. So that could be some of the data that is in there as well. So we're working to kind of correct that and make sure that those are reported accurately, and also put proactive strategies where students want to be here. And a lot of that comes from our personalized learning initiatives, getting into those students, getting into the way that they want to learn, and really improving the instruction that goes on in the class. So our next strategic initiative obviously is teaching learning. That's kind of the reason why we exist as an entity. We had three major areas in there. Expand courses and programs to address the needs of all students. Develop shared instructional expectations, which we'll get into a little more depth, and then provide high-quality class expectations. When you look at what the pictures are up here, the one picture, the one set of pictures on the left is our career course at UH, where we have the partnership with the University Hospital and going out with our students, working with TriPoint. On the right are some pictures from our staff development days, which have become personalized. We talked a little bit about it in my update about the next three days coming up, which we're really excited about. We're really working to personalize staff learning, but we personalize student learning, so provide all those different opportunities. And the graph that I put in there, which is really small because I tried to fit a lot into one slide, is leaders I work with across the district encourage and support innovation and change, and that unanimously is agreed. 44.4% was definitely agreed, but then we look at the other two, the green and the light blue, those are slightly agree and strongly agree. So we are definitely blessed with leaders who are encouraging teachers to innovate, come up with new ways to reach their students, and kind of continue on with that approach. So when we look at shared instructional expectations, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Locker, because this is her baby and kind of where she's turned from a little bit, to talk about the Riverside Way and our personalized learning initiatives and kind of how they've all come together.
So I know this slide is a little bit difficult to see. One of the things that we have done over the last year and a half as a staff is we developed these instructional expectations, and it's been a while, but I think we talked, I know that we talked about it in the programs meeting when we started doing it. And these are things that we expect to happen in every classroom, and this was done in conjunction with teachers, things that we want to make sure every student experiences while they're here at Riverside. So things like, everyone's actively engaged in the learning process. Classrooms are student-centered and offered student choice. Teachers use data to guide their instruction. Positive classroom culture is important for student learning, and then classroom physical environment instructional materials support student learning. So those are our big goals for every student, K-12 that goes through Riverside. And then what we did is we broke it down, and we identified things that you would see if you walked into a classroom, what students might be doing or what teachers might be doing. For example, everyone's actively engaged in the learning process. One of the things that you might see in a classroom where that's happening is students are talking to each other. They're actually engaged with each other, okay? They're not just sitting, looking at a teacher, receiving information. Things you might see on the teacher end is that teachers facilitate learning, which means they are asking questions, they're interacting with students, they're moving around the room. So that's what this document shows. I know it's tough to see, but you can also see that next to each one of these, there are checkmarks, and they're different colors. We started to bring personalized learning in, and I heard a lot of feedback from teachers of, oh, are we starting a whole new thing? Like, we're going to abandon the Riverside Way, and now we're going to start personalized learning, and that's all that we ever do. So I took the Riverside Way document, and I took the personalized learning information from the state, and I went through the Riverside Way document, and I put the color checkmark that corresponds to everything in personalized learning. This is without us knowing anything about personalized learning, without having taught teachers anything, without sitting through every, any workshop. Teachers created a document of the actions they wanted to see from students and from teachers that align that much with personalized learning. So this is, we're going to talk about this, I'm going to talk about this with teachers next week when we do professional development, but this is what our staff wants for our students. Doesn't mean we're there yet. Don't misunderstand what I'm saying, okay? We're still doing the work. But to me, it's very powerful to look at this document that teachers created and agreed to and said, yes, we want to see this for every student at Riverside, and know that before they had learned one single thing about personalized learning, these were the things they were wanting for our students. So that transition to that type of environment should be much easier, I think, than they or parents or students even realize, because this is what we want for our kids. So that's where we are. That's one of the big things that is happening in the teaching and learning world.
So one of the things about this is, you know, if you measure it, it means it matters. And we're, the way you measure things like this, and we're really excited to roll this out this year as an initiative from our district leadership team, is instructional rounds. An instructional round is a, it's not evaluative, it's a group of, it's based on medical rounds that happen in other professions, or based on the rounds that happen specifically in the medical, a little group of doctors come around, they kind of watch others' work and kind of provide feedback. Our teachers are going to go, and they're going to go into classrooms. They're going to use a form based off of the Riverside Way to kind of see what is going on, make some data. We're going to have that data next year to share out that, here's our document, now we'll be able to share, this is how many times we saw this occurring, this is what we saw occurring, and these are our problems of practice, or this is what we're missing to take the next step. So we're really excited about that next step, and it's coming from internal, it's coming from our own teachers. It's not from an administrator who gives that. And a lot of times, when peer-to-peer feedback is much more powerful, much more effective than administrative to teacher feedback. So we know that that's the case. We have that kind of set up, that framework's set up, and now this year, we're going to initiate that, put that into place so that all of our students are getting to that, we're taking the steps along the way. So really exciting stuff kind of happening from teaching and learning. Fiscal sensibility, facilities improvements and investments is what we're going to talk about in just a little bit. Fiscal stability and communication of district finances. I was going to put a picture of Mr. Placko in one of his presentations, but I just couldn't get a chance to get it, ran out of time, and I couldn't use AI to generate it. So next time, we'll get through that. But really, when we sat down and Garrett and I sat down and worked on this together, one of the things that we really took away back in, say, you know, Mr. Arlesik hinted to it a little bit, we did, we did a lot this summer. You know, whoa, there's a, there's a lot, and we had a lot going on to all of our buildings, special legacy buildings. One of the things we, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, $2.5 million CTE addition at the Riverside campus. We're in the planning stages of that for specific programming to one of our legacy buildings. The new gym floor at Lamuth Middle School, it's been a long time coming. Super excited about that. Taking care of our legacy building. So new carpet for our existing modular units, new flooring in Melridge, either carpet or tile, depending. The campus band room, that carpet was fiber-borne, and we replaced it. It is gorgeous. Ceiling tile replacement throughout the district. It's just refreshing certain spaces. Classroom furniture and technology improvements to facilitate personalized learning initiatives. Some of those are in, some of those are in back order, but they're coming. But even screens like this throughout the district that are touchscreens that can be casted to by teachers, can be plugged into, that really help facilitate that learning and work with those initiatives. PA systems replaced at our legacy building so that they work through the phones, that they work outside. There is no longer the 1940-style radio at Lamuth that left today. Really sad to see it go. I know Dr. Masich is upset about that, but it's been replaced with state-of-the-art technology. It's even where we had our first complaint from the neighbor, because they can hear the announcements now. So we've since turned it down.
And I think I'd add, too, that last year, we replaced the campus. In the past, John R. and Riverside were on separate systems, so there was no way to get campus-wide, and that was corrected last summer.
Even things like scheduling the bells had to be done from outside source, because[1762.21] because it took an act of God to figure out how to schedule the bell, schedule these old time clocks. They're all internal now. Mr. Remwick went in, put a system in that he went in and scheduled the bell system and the Loomouth schedule. It's got some complications. It's not a simple, you know, seven-period day. I think there's 14 bells throughout the day. But really putting that in and getting that to work has been something that we did. Mostly internally, we had some help from some installers, but really working to make sure that we can house the system and that they all work there. Our security cameras were upgraded and installed. For the longest time, Melridge had the faux security system. There was one camera that kind of showed, it worked. Now there's a full camera system throughout all of our legacy buildings in terms of safety. And then the wireless networks were upgraded as well. We've talked a lot about the vestibules, obviously that didn't make the list. We talked a lot about those projects as well. We'll get into more of that with some more detailed pictures as we continue on. Advocacy partnerships and engagement is the last of the four areas in our plan. Mr. Carabine is going to take a minute break from filming and come up and tell us about the communication and transparency and some results from our communication survey. But we've got some great partnerships that we've developed and engaged our partners. I think one of the proud moments is that portrait of Riverside Beaver that came out of our business advisory. Can't wait to see the implementation of that this year. There's been a lot of excitement about that. In fact, we are sending it home to all of our families. Our senior showcase and their senior projects and kind of how they're working with local businesses. As well as our banner sponsorships, which continues to grow. And that's on the old track, but still to see that and wait till, it's going to get even better with that new track.
If I took a picture of it today, it would be covered in white plastic.
So they don't spray over them. But to see kind of where we're at with kind of creating those partnerships and we're continuing to look to leverage our partnerships with our business partners to find new and creative ways for not only teaching and learning our kids, but also supporting them in all of their endeavors. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Carabine to talk a little about our specific communication and targeted communication efforts.
One of the things I want to go over is when we approved this plan in 2022, we talked about doing an annual communication survey to parents and stakeholders. So for the second straight summer, we did put that survey out. I believe there should be copies in your folders. I'm not going to go through all the slides, I'm just going to go through some of the bullet points. But basically, the survey is kind of like three tiers. The first tier is about kind of district communications. That's your district level, your newsletters, your mailings, your social media, your website. The next one is kind of on how the building principals are communicating. And then the third tier is kind of how the teachers are communicating. So 85.2 rated the communication. Well, first of all, there's 636 responses. The survey was open for, from June 17th through June 28th. It was emailed to all parents on the 17th and 21st and 27th. It was posted on our social media three times during that timeframe. It was also as a pop-up alert on our website to anyone who went to our website during those nine or 10 days. That was like the first thing they would see, a pop-up. You had to X out of it to get out of the survey. But out of those 636, 85.2 rated our district communication good or excellent. 87.5% agree or strongly agree that are informed about district news and events. District newsletters, Facebook website, word of mouth and pipeline with the top five areas of how people get their information about Riverside. When we talk about the communication building principals, 68.3 agree or strongly agree. And 72.5% are satisfied with the frequency of communication from principals. 57.4 agree slash strongly agree that teachers do a good job of communicating. 59.4 are satisfied with frequency of communication from teachers. Obviously, some room to improve in all these areas, but especially in that one. Parents prefer their communication methods from teachers, direct email, text messages, phone call, Infinite Campus or newsletters. Just to talk, so what do we do with those results? You know, not only were there the statistical results, but there were options for comments. So we kind of go through all the comments and kind of track the top trends. So if you go in the, I need to put this up there, but if you go in your handout here, you'll see kind of the top trends of the comments. But we kind of take all that and what we also did with the strategic plan a couple of years ago was we, for the first time ever, created a communications, expectations and guidelines document for all staff, not just teachers, but for anyone who works here. And we've been putting that out to, it's actually on our website under the staff page. And we kind of take the feedback from our parents and stakeholders and we put those into our expectations and guidelines. Some of it's super obvious stuff, like just, you know, making sure you're communicating with parents if a student is struggling. Don't wait until, you know, the grading period ends or don't wait until that report card is posted. Like get in front of it, you know? We don't want parents to be surprised when they're seeing their student is struggling on a report card. We want that communication to happen earlier. Same thing with our principals. We strongly urge our principals to send at minimum a weekly newsletter. It doesn't have to be a huge in-depth thing, but just, you know, news and events, couple of updates from the buildings every week. So we continue to tailor that document and we send it out. I remember we sent it out at the beginning of the year, so when they come back next week, I'll send it out and kind of like in the beginning of the year and then again throughout the second semester. So not only do we do that survey at the end of the year, but actually this was Ms. Brewster's idea when we did our senior citizen appreciation dinner. We get 200, 300 senior citizens who normally aren't really paying attention to Riverside. They're not on social media, they're not, they don't often come to a lot of our events. So that senior citizen appreciation dinner, sometimes the only time they walk through these doors or have any affiliation with Riverside one time a year. So we thought, hey, while we have them, while we have them, let's survey them. So we did a handout to all the seniors. There was a bunch of different questions on there, but since we're just talking about communication, the results from that were, oh boy. 76.2% rated the district communication good or excellent. Their top five sources of where they get Riverside information is mailings. More on that in a second. Word of mouth, Facebook, News Herald, thank you, Mr. Durst. This is a News Herald reporter right here. And our website.
And the law.
And he's a 2018 grad, or 2018, right? Mailings, a lot of school districts don't do mailings anymore. It saves them money, saves them time. They do everything through their website. We still do three mailings a year. I can add a man about doing that. I think it's very important that we hit every single address in the district at least three times a year to give them news and updates, keep them informed. On our quality profile, that's kind of our annual report that we're going to be finalizing come September. We will be mailing that out. And on the back of that quality profile, I put a feedback email, like any feedback for us, email, communications@riversideschools.net, email, anything. But it's just an opportunity for people to give us their ideas or their feedback or their complaints or whatever it is. During the strategic plan, we've also done a big district-wide branding focus. You'll notice when you receive emails from staff members now, everyone's got the same email signature. Trying to get everybody on the same page with logos and colors. One thing that occurs to me a little bit is when you walk through this canvas, you'll see all different types of golds or yellows. Some things are bright yellow, some things are gold. So actually in the communications, expectations and guidelines, we got a whole page about branding and links to our logos and the fonts and the PEX codes and the Pantone management system codes.
Even the teeth of the beaver.
Yeah.
The teeth are, the beaver's design, so the teeth are parallel to whatever you're in. I did not know that.
So the way that beaver's facing down, that's how it's supposed to be. Sometimes it's facing up and it's just, you know, from a marketing standpoint. We did district-wide letterhead. Every single employee now has their own letterhead. So when they're, you know, they're still doing, they have like official requests to make or letters to mail, it's on the letterhead. I want to talk about this really quick. This year, we're launching and we're going to do, we already did a staff communication. You guys probably saw it this week. We're going to do a parent communication before school starts. Myself and principals for the last seven or eight years have been using a communication tool called Bright Arrow. So when you get a phone call or a text message or an email from the district or a building principal desk, we're using a tool called Bright Arrow. For years and years and years, we've been trying to limit the use of these free apps, Reminds, the homerooms, class dojos. We have no control over those apps. They can change our policies or standards at every time. In fact, Reminds last September came out and said, hey, we're going to limit messaging by 70%. And our teacher was using Remind. And by like Tuesday or Wednesday every week, they ran out of the free messaging, couldn't send messages anymore. So I contacted Bright Arrow last year and then they said we could make accounts for all your teachers. And the nice thing about Bright Arrow is it syncs automatically with Infinite Campus. So teachers don't have to do anything, parents don't have to do anything. All that information syncs daily with Infinite Campus. So their class rosters are synced, contact information synced. No one has to join anything. So this year, they have an app called Bright Chat. Actually, it's called Parent Hub, which allows teachers to send Bright Chats, which is essentially just a message. And it'd be a two-way communication system. So teachers can use the app, they can still use the website. Parents can download the app, they'll get the emails and texts and calls from the app. They'll still get the emails and texts and calls anyway, but they'll also show up in the app. And then if a teacher sends what they call Bright Chat, which is a message, they'll get it through the app and it'll push notification. So it's essentially like Remind, only we have control over it, we have records of it. It's for teacher protection too. Got to pay anything should ever happen or anyone's accused of anything or, you know, someone needs record of something. We will have records of everything in and out.
Just to kind of jump in a little bit, the free apps that are out there, although they do do a good job with student privacy and privacy issues, when you have a Bright Chat or an app that you pay for that is a subscription-based service, we know that there is a certain agreement that they're following, that our student's data is protected and that is also archived. And it's archived for our record retention. So it's not a one-year archive and then have we had to go back to it? It could be a challenge to find it. So it's something to kind of get us in line with our policies and regulations and best practices, especially with student data retention, privacy and also role policy. So it's something that is going to take some adjustment from both, from our families as well as our teachers and their staff, but it is a, it is a best practice and it's something we're looking for.
And is it their language translation?
So there's language translation. So when you're a parent, you can download the app. Sorry, I started to film and talk at the same time. You can download the app and go into your settings and change the language translation to what your language is. So if a teacher sends something in English and the parent has their translation set to Spanish, it will automatically translate. Which we struggle with. Couple of other things, you know, in the past year that we've done to try to, you know, increase communication. We did the superintendent video updates, which Dr. Vazina loves.
Google reel is coming out soon.
He's always at my office door saying, wait, we filmed the next one, wait, we filmed the next one. We're actually going to film the next one on Tuesday. If anybody wants to throw things at us.
Make the cameo, feel free.
We do those monthly. In the past 12 months, we've had articles appear either in the News Herald or 358, Channel 19, 48 different times. And then this last one kind of ties in with the business partnerships and engagement. But oddly enough, came out of the communication survey from last year. I noticed a trend last year in a lot of comments. A lot of people wanted, their comments, they wanted to be involved. They wanted to come into the schools, they wanted to help out. So in our district leadership team's communication committee, we decided, well, let's do a parent slash being engagement survey. We sent that out in March and basically what it was, we asked them, what do they do for a living, where do they work, describe what you do? Are you willing to come into our schools and talk about your career? Are you willing to host a senior for senior project or a junior for junior project or a sophomore for sophomore shadow day? And another one was are you willing to join a PTL or a PTA? Or are you willing to sponsor events or donate items to schools for, you know, for events? We got like 112 responses. It was more toward the end of the spring when we did that. So we didn't really get to take full advantage of this school year, but next school year, like when people are looking for guest speakers or people are looking for, to send their students off to senior project or sophomore shadow day, like that's a bank of information that we can use and continue to work with.
So we don't miss new parents that have moved into the district that wouldn't have participated in this? Is there any way?
Yeah, we'll probably send it out like early.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah.
Okay.
So what's next? Obviously, we've shared, we've done a lot of work this year and actually the past two years. A lot of that is to be committed to our teacher leaders and our district leaders throughout, but our teacher leaders through our DLT and kind of the subcommittees that we have and the structure we have in place for these ideas to kind of go and flourish and empower. But next up's the recommendations. The first and foremost is we need, there's, we've done a lot, we've discussed a lot, but we're not done. So let's continue the good work that's going on and start to monitor that progress as to where we are. One of the things that we have checked off in our action steps and guidelines, we've identified some areas that this means we've completed it, but we really need to identify qualitative and quantitative data across key areas that they identify the impact of this. So we've got ideas that say create career elective courses. And then the data point for are they done is we've got career elective courses. But what's the impact of that? How does that impact us in terms of, and how can we measure that? Can we measure that? So what are these student achievement, you know, what are we going to do for that? Well, kind of there's a four big areas where you can look to that. I think first and foremost is student achievement and outcomes. When you look at the initial, and it's preliminary, so, you know, when we look at our student achievement overall index from the state of Ohio, we're showing growth. You know, we are raising up our overall student achievement scores. We're excited about that and we're continuing to trend in the right direction. So we have to identify those key achievement measures and what they mean and kind of how they tie into the strategic plan. I think another big one, K through 12 or pre-K through 12, our goal is to take our students, when they enter these doors, to graduation and across that stage. So what's our graduation rate? Is it continuing? Is it rising? I think it's something we need to continue to work to improve upon and to get our rate up a lot higher. And are our students graduating and are they graduating college and career ready? And what does that mean? And that's the big question where I think someone was, I know I struggle with kind of what that means is like they're getting into school or are they being successful in school? And we're trying to do some of that, but that data is very challenging to get a hold of because it is self-volunteer and self-report data. We reach out annually to our graduates and our students, see are you still enrolled in college? Are you working? Where are you working? And do those kind of surveys. And our survey response rate on that, it is relatively low. But I also think we're trying to find different ways to get that data to kind of continue to improve that data to say, what we did to prepare you is good. And I think some of that too, we're having through just some focus groups and some discussions with graduates when they come back and just some of those impersonally or personal discussions. Hey, how's your first year going? What's going on? How do you feel successful? School climate and culture. We know that when people feel welcome and they want to be here, they're going to be successful. So what does that look like? And do our staff and students? School climate is just not about how our students feel, it's about how all of our staff feels and not just our teachers, all certified and classified staff feel. And how do our parents and community feel? We want them to feel welcomed in our schools. We want them to have a place in our schools. We want our schools to be safe. So how do we do, how do we balance the idea of operational safety with engagement and welcomeness? Behavior and attendance data is a huge piece to measure. Is our behavior instance continuing to be on the right track and trajectory in decline? So are our students, and are we teaching the right behaviors? And are our students coming up and showing up in our schools more and more? Because we know when they're here and they're present, they're learning. And that's kind of the point. Teaching and learning. I mentioned instructional rounds. The other part is we're implementing curriculum and we're doing that, but are we truly implementing it with fidelity? So we have these fidelity checkpoints and we're kind of going through to make sure that we're implementing this curriculum with fidelity. And we know that if we're implementing the curriculum with fidelity, then we can see, is that curriculum that we have proposed and we have implemented, is it being impactful? And that goes back up to student achievement data. And then finally, just student engagement data. One of the points of the strategic plan is each one of our principals has this advisory council that they have and they mean different things. But meeting with those students, and one of my goals is to form a superintendent's advisory council to work with students this year, just to kind of get their feedback on, hey, how are things going in Riverside? What are you proud of? What do we need to work on? What's going wrong, what's not? And you know what? Students will tell you. Students drove a lot of the decisions we made to some of the changes we did to scheduling this year. They drove a lot of that. We took that feedback, you know, seriously and we made some changes. And then And then all stakeholder feedback. We mentioned the surveys that we're doing, continuing to survey. No one likes to get that negative feedback, but we really sit back and say, if they're out there, how do we get better? And really always having that continuous improvement mindset along the way. And I think that's something we've done a great job with, kind of taking, if this is the perception, we're going to go ahead and change it. I think one of the things, Bright Chat comes up. One of the major things in the communication survey is, I get all of these different apps, I don't know which one to go to. So bringing it to one, not only does it streamline and get us aligned with privacy, but it also gets us, get our parents aligned with simplicity, so we're excited about that. The last one I have on the slide is from the question. Leaders make decisions that align with the strategic plan of the district. Since I started, we have harped the strategic plan. We're going to put this strategic plan in, we're going to continue to work and finish the strategic plan. This is the will of the board and the people and the groups that came together to form this. This is our guideline, this is our roadmap, this is what we're doing. And kind of seeing where we are overwhelmingly, you know, agree that we are, every decision we make is in line with this document, which is, for me, a great thing to kind of say, we're doing what we were tasked to do by this organization. So that, if there aren't any questions, that's going to conclude my part of special reports, but I'll take any questions at this point.
Can you share the, what Dr. Malakar talked about? Can you guys share that document with us, just like in email?
Yes, yes.
I'm just curious what it says, it's very hard to read.
It's awesome.
And there was.
I will, I'll put it in the Friday, yeah, next week's Friday package.
And there was a presentation we talked about with the Boed parents about personalized learning.
That's in my update.
Is that in your update?
Yes, we'll mention that.
Okay, I just want to mention that because it tied into that. And thank you, Nick. Great job.
Last but not least, special report tonight. Mr. Placo, as requested, permanent improvement.
Right. As we talked about last week, or two weeks ago, we wanted to get an update on the permanent improvement fund. I think it's timely with us looking at facility improvements. I know we've discussed this in committees, both in finance and buildings and grounds, but maybe not so much as a full board at the table. So we thought tonight would be a good night to kind of go through that, you know, especially we have a new board member here tonight to help him get up to speed. And even Ms. Brewster being relatively new, maybe we haven't had as much discussion as we needed to on these funds. So I thought we'd kind of go through the history, what we have, what we generate, and how we got to where we are today with the current cash balance. And I'm also excited, this is the first time in eight years, I'm not the last speaker before public comment and voting, so it's kind of nice to speak a little earlier than usual. So our permanent improvement fund, the current levy that's in place was approved in the election November 3rd, 2015. That was effective for tax year 2016, which is paid in 2017. It's a continuous levy, which means it continues on indefinitely. The original gross tax rate is 2.5 mils for residential taxpayers. So anytime I talk of tax rates, I'm talking about residential in this presentation. The current effective rate is 1.96 mils. And so basically, because of House Bill 920, as valuations go up, your tax rates come down on this levy. And so the current tax rate right now is for tax year 2023, collection year 24. The levy that was passed in 2015 replaced an existing five-year, 1.89 mil levy that was originally approved in 1996 and renewed in 2001, 2006, and 2011. And that levy's effective tax rate was 1.68 mils when it was replaced. And when I'm saying replaced, I'm referring to a levy expired, we put a new one about, not necessarily a replacement levy, which is technically something different. And also, at the time, there was an existing bond issue that was currently effective, it had 0.85 mils from 1993 that was expiring. So at the time that the new permanent improvement levy was increased, it was basically offsetting that decrease. So the voters and taxpayers saw like a minimal increase, I think it was before my time, I think it was like $5 per $100,000 increase in taxes when that levy was approved. That bond issue 1993 was actually the bond issue that built this media center and the media centers and additions in elementary schools. So for permanent improvement fund, it can only be used for permanent improvements. The higher vice code, section 5705.001E states, a permanent improvement or improvement means any property, asset, or improvement with an estimated life or usefulness of five years or more. And the proceeds cannot be used for salaries, benefits, can't pay teacher salaries, we can't pay the gas bill, can't pay electric bill, has to be used for those improvements. And we account for it in a separate fund. Here at Riverside, we use Fund 033, which is a little unique. Typically, most districts are Fund 003, but whoever set it up many years ago used 033, which is just, you know, doesn't really matter that much, but it's just a little unique. So most districts, you see Fund 033, it's too hard to fix that. And it's not, this funding's not included in our five-year forecast per the rules of how you set those up and send those to. So the auditor's estimate of tax levies, this is a document we get from the county auditor's office, it's called Schedule A, it gives us an estimate of what the levy's going to collect, so based on the current one we have. It's 2.5 million approximately, and they base it on a 94% collection rate right now. That's COVID, that's a pretty conservative number. We're typically more in the 99, 98, 99% collection rate, so we receive a little bit more than that 2.5. We only receive a little bit of minimal growth, basically from new construction. Valuation increase, this increases result in a decrease in the tax rate. And just to kind of give you an example of how that's increased, since the levy was passed, the estimate was 2.35 million, so it's only gone up a little bit over the past, what, five or six years? But even though our valuations have gone up much more than, it's about 8% increase in revenue, but our valuations have gone up much more than that over the years. The current available cash balance in the fund, so this is minus all outstanding encumbrances, we have a lot of things encumbered right now because of Vestable Project and bus purchases and different things like that. So our current available cash to be used is just shy of 6.6 million right now. That's because we received an advance in July. So we typically receive revenue from an advance in July. We get our property tax element in August, the balance that's owed to us. You know, so basically, when you figure property tax bills that are usually due in July, we get the money in July and August. And then we get the homestead reimbursement from the state in October for those who qualify, the state handles it on their behalf. And then we also receive an advance typically in February with the settlement in March, and homestead in May of each year. And then we also allocate interest based on that fund balance each month. We do a calculation on our different funds, because our funds are all commingled into like three bank accounts, so we allocate that interest out based on fund balances. This slide is an example of the uses we've done with this fund. We've, you know, we have vestable projects, turf, weight room, bathroom stalls, paving, seal coating, Chromebooks, computers, servers, trailers, projectors. There's a whole list of things that we've spent those funds on over the past, you know, about eight or nine years since 2015. And then this is a lot of numbers on one slide, but I kind of wanted to show what the history of the fund is and how we got to the fund balance that we have today. Because to be honest, we have a higher fund balance than we typically do in our permanent improvement fund. So going back to looking at fiscal year 2016, so before the new increased levy was passed, our permanent improvement fund started with 717,000 in it. We received just over 1.7 million in revenue. Our expenditures were one point, just shy of 1.7 million with an ending balance of 773,000. We had outstanding encumbrances of 559,000. So we had unencumbered available balance at the end of fiscal year 2016 of only 213,000. And what I thought would be important to kind of point out, so, you know, Riverside was not in the best financial shape back in those days. We had a lot of things financed, Chromebooks, school buses, musical instruments. So in fiscal year 16, we had $942,000 of debt payment. So out of that 1.7 million, 942,000 was actually paying for things that were already purchased in prior years that were financed. Going into 2017, our revenue was 2.9 million. And so, well, how did that happen? Back then, we decided to move forward with the turf replacement project. We had just passed the bond issue for the new schools and operating levy, and we were talking about financing the turf. We decided at that time not to do that. We did a, what's called a tax anticipation note. We only did like a six-month tax anticipation note tomorrow against the following year's collection of $600,000. So that's why the revenue's kind of overstated because of that tax anticipation note. But we also received in that year $230,000 from what was Lake Health at the time for the logos on the field, a $15,000 railroad easement when they constructed the railroad, railroad rivers and purchased some of our property there, just to do the tracks over a little bit. And a $43,000 sewer easement to Lake County to run some sewer lines along 84. Our expenditures were 2.1 million. So just kind of cut it short a little bit, our unencumbered balance in the year was 262,000. Going FY18, our revenue was also a little bit higher because we advanced $375,000. And 2018 is also the first year we collected the full amount of the new PI levy. So between, you know, receiving about 2.4 million from the levy and advanced $375,000 from the general fund to kind of cover or make sure we don't go negative in our fund that year. That's how our revenue was a little bit higher than normal on that year. We had 3.5 million expenditures that included paying for the turf and also paying off the tax anticipation note. So our ending balance in FY18 was 851,000. Going into fiscal year 19 was a pretty typical year. It's probably the last normal year of this normal revenue, 2.5 million and 1.6 million expenditures. So we had an ending balance in 2019 of 485,000. This is when the permanent improvement fund started to accelerate and accumulate cash. Basically, the short answer is because of COVID. What had happened was in 2020, beyond the COVID started, and there were three different stimulus packages where school districts received, you know, additional revenue from the federal government to use for COVID-related expenses. Riverside was, you know, we tried to maintain as much of a normal learning environment as possible. And so we didn't have a whole lot of COVID expenditures, other than we had teachers in the fiscal year 2021 time, teaching online, so those were allowable expenses. So we moved those teacher salaries off our general fund to what was called the ESSR funds at the time, creating a savings in our general fund that wasn't necessarily needed for the save, for the general fund. So we transferred in fiscal year 2021, $1,350,000 from our general fund into the permanent improvement fund to use for improvements. Because we didn't want to use the ESSR funds. You could have done like HVAC upgrades and various things, but they were federal funds. You're subject to a lot more regulations. We're using this method, you basically freed up the cash and then you eliminated timelines and those requirements by transferring to the permanent improvement fund the savings we generated in the general fund. Then in 2022, same thing. Transferred 1,650,000 from the general fund into the permanent improvement fund. And we also received, so back in 2020 as well, we applied for a grant to do the welding lab. And when COVID happened, the state cut that grant and didn't fund it. We decided to do the welding lab anyways. So we did that construction project, and then they came back and said, hey, by the way, we're going to fund you for that project. And we're like, well, we already did the project. They said, well, we'll give you the cash. And so they paid us the 444,585 dollars for the welding lab grant, basically reimbursing our permanent improvement fund. And then we got a little slap on the wrist, they said, you didn't follow federal procurement guidelines. And it's like, well, because we didn't have to when we did the project, it was after the fact, but they kind of let us slide on that one. So that, so, you know, we ended FY2022. We went from in 2020, a $1.47 million cash balance to a $6.6 million cash balance because of those surpluses of funds. And then, as we know, since COVID, interest rates have gone up the last couple of years. So in 2023, 2024, we had $248,000 just in interest income in 2023. And 2024, another $409,000 in interest income. So that's how we got to the ending balance in fiscal year 2024 that just ended on June 30th of $9 million, of which 3 million, 3.1 million were encumbered for vestable of school buses and all the other projects that we were doing this summer.
So the interest income from just this fund stays with this fund? And the interest income from all the other general funds stays with general? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Some additional things that occurred, that contributing to that increasing fund balance, was grants that we received in the last couple of years that deferred expenses that would normally hit the general fund, or, excuse me, the permanent improvement fund, that ended up going to use for grant funds. We received a emergency connectivity grant of $469,000 to spend on Chromebooks. Typically, we buy Chromebooks at PI from permanent fund. We bought those out of a federal grant. Using our ESSR funds, there's another $500,000 we spent on Chromebooks from those funds instead of the permanent improvement fund. We also did the wireless network upgrade and also purchasing notebook computers. That was another 437,000 that would normally be on PI that was not on PI because of those grants. The vestable project, we received a K-12 safety grant of $400,000. That subsidized part of that project as well. We also received an Ohio EPA bus grant of $200,000, so that helped to offset some of our bus purchases. We had US EPA bus grant we got from $60,000 that also offset some bus purchases. And then we've gotten Ohio Bureau of Workers Compensation Safety Grant, $40,000. We spent on bus cameras. And even after I put this together, I thought of yet another $135,000 bus grant to the state of Ohio. A couple other Attorney General's safety grants, around $20,000 apiece over the last couple of years. So all these things that were deferring those expenses away from PI to these grant funds, helping to increase that available money in our permanent improvement fund for other improvements. Some additional permanent improvement funds, kind of like an honorable note noted here. We do have a Fund 003 that we deposited when we sold Haddon and Hale Road and Leroy. Those funds were deposited into an 003 fund. The current balance there is $651,000. It's a separate permanent improvement fund from our traditional permanent fund. We're still owed $20,000 from Pageville Township for the land behind Haddon as part of our purchase agreement. They're paying us $4,000 a year due in January 2025, 6, 7, 8, 9. And then lastly, there's also another permanent, what we call Special Cost Center for the synthetic turf replacement fund. And we did the turf project, we also put up a cell tower in the back. We were putting those monies aside for turf replacement because you have to replace the turf every 10 to 12 years. And so our monthly revenues, just over $2,000 right now. There's a schedule that increases over time a little bit, so about $26,000 annually go in there. We currently have about $153,000 set aside for turf replacements. So we figured by the time we get into turf replacement, you know, our sponsorship, that should cover the majority of the cost of that, it's a little bit less hit to PI until we do that replacement. Any questions on permanent improvement?
Mr. Placo, just to go back to the chart with all the numbers on like your debt pay. Just so, just for everybody's understanding, the debt obviously went down from 16 to current. And can you talk a little bit about how that was done?
Basically, it was just paying off the debt through their schedule. So we had several financings for bus purchases, musical instruments, and basically, we were just paying it off per the schedules. They were fairly low interest rates, so it didn't really make a lot of sense to pay them off early. But it's just, basically, since I've been here, since I started, just being a subject team, we have not financed anything out of the permanent improvement fund other than that one tax anticipation note to do the turf project. And since then, we haven't done any new borrowings, so we're just paying that stuff off over time.
Anything else?
That concludes all of tonight's special reports.
Thank you. Great, that brings us to old business. So Mr. Keeney, I know you wanted to talk about your review of Bieloski and your visits. I know for you, it's kind of new business, but for us, we've been talking about it. So I'm going to throw it under there.
Okay, I'll just go ahead. In the last couple of weeks since I was sworn into this board, I have familiarized myself with the Bieloski report in order to get a better understanding of the recommendation of approximately $98.5 million in building repairs and upgrades, with approximately $45.3 million of that in critical and potentially critical conditions categories. I've found many commonalities shared by various buildings that would be considered low-hanging fruit that could be addressed through normal operations and existing budgeting. Other categories of recommendations from the report, from the report will require serious discussions among the board, administration, and staff as how to best to move forward to satisfying existing condition deficits of our infrastructure. I've done a drive-through around of Riverside Elementary and Buckeye Elementary Schools and the maintenance facility located on Riverdale Road. I did a site and building walk-around of Mill Ridge Elementary. I have done site and interior walkthroughs of Riverside High, John R. Williams, the Muth Middle School, Parkside Elementary, and the Transportation Garage. During those visits, I informally by chance met various administrators, staff, and faculty. Everyone I encountered was very helpful with any questions I had regarding the facilities. Parkside and Riverview Elementary Schools were not addressed in Bieloski report as they are now only five years in service. However, items identified in the However, items identified in the report can be applied to these buildings to ensure that they remain in top service to the district and not fall victim to deferred maintenance. As time goes on, I will put together my assessment of each building and recommendations for improvement. Aside from the Bieloski report, I have become more aware of spacing requirements and logistics required to accommodate various student levels. More study into district demographics, the growth and decline of student projections, and overall housing build-out is required on my part, and I will pursue this data. Board contracted for the design and construction management of a new career technical education addition to Riverside campus. I have requested to attend and will attend the initial meeting with the architect team to discuss our needs, potential complications, and additional work that may be required with this project. I look forward to seeing this addition add value to the campus. In closing, my position on this board was not acquired in the usual way, but by an appointment that required the involvement of a probate court judge. Decision was based on my career qualifications that added to the existing board members' well-rounded skills and experiences. I look forward to working with all board members, the administration, staff, and faculty to improve student achievement, facility readiness and longevity, and transportation services. That's it.
Thank you. All right, I believe that was the only old business that was on there?
I had one thing that I've been working on.
I was going to look it under new? Oh, something?
Old.
Oh, okay.
I've been working on something with the buses, so at this time, I make a resolution to accept the $12,000 quote from Armor Linings to undercode 40 of our buses. Just so everyone here knows, they did one of our buses for free some time ago, just to show us what they do. And then unfortunately, this, not unfortunately, this went to the finance committee, but it was in the finance committee, and unfortunately, we had a board member resign who was the chair of that committee, and the process stopped. And now there's no more time to really, there's no more time to wait because this has to be done before winter and has to get scheduled in. And so I make that resolution.
So, Mr. Placko, just to make sure we are looking at this correctly, it would have to be a resolution that would be attached where?
We should probably add it to the finance agenda and probably actually vote on it during that section of the agenda. But we, but I do know that we did issue a PO at the request of the Transportation Department that they were having 10 buses undercoated through a different company, I think it was the other company that was out of downtown Canton area.
Yeah, it was out of Canton. It was the one that Mr. Andre preferred to even with that.
And you did that without board notification?
It was under the threshold.
And you did that without board notification, knowing that we were in this process?
We did that from, out of the finance committee. We had talked about, I was trying to talk about having 10 buses coded and move forward with that.
So the finance committee put that out, the 10 buses?
Not finance.
No, it wasn't finance. Yeah, we, we discussed it, but then we were going to have a report by Kyle at the board meeting, which all of us heard at the board meeting, but I didn't know there was any more action taken.
So our transportation supervisor, Kyle, made a report about both of the companies. And just so everyone knows, the product that was used and reported on was Crown. Crown had a five-year military study in Canada, and that study showed that for every dollar they spent on the Crown, on their vehicles, they got a $6 return. And so the other company of which you're speaking is a copycat of that, and we don't know exactly what their product is because they use the same study in their presentation of information. So this has been in process, and you're saying that you went ahead and approved a PO to go with the other company, knowing that the board had not yet decided what to do?
We did approve the other company to go because of, under the recommendation of Mr. Andre, which is what he preferred because it was water-based, and they were able to do that further away from the site, which did not cause issues when they came on-site.
And it's, it was under the threshold?
It was under the threshold as well.
Right, so I'm just saying, in working together with board and administration, you knew full well this was in process, and you did go and use that authority, but it was not in good communication with the board. So I'll just put that on record. You should be wanting to work with the board a little bit more closely than going off like that, knowing that this was in process. So then, I will change my, my resolution, and I will keep the resolution the same. I take that back, I'll keep the resolution the same, because we are using 50 school buses, and 10 will go ahead and be coded by that alternative company, and 40 can be, we will accept the contract through Armor Linings to do 40.
Okay, and I second it. So it's just to add this to the agenda, is that correct?
That's what I'm asking. So Gary, this would be, Mr. Placko, I'm sorry, this would be adding it to the agenda?
We do a resolution to add to the agenda, then vote on it at a later time when we get to the other business items. So my recommendation, we have it as we add to the agenda, and then we get to the finance vote, and we vote on it.
Can I ask that we actually table that for another meeting? Because we haven't actually had an opportunity to even see the contract, so I can't vote on it.
So, Mr. Placko, do you have the contract? I think it was emailed to you today?
It was emailed to you this afternoon.
Can you pull that out so everyone can see it?
So you're going to ask us to analyze that now so that we can vote on it today?
No, 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 I'm not asking to analyze it. We're in the discussion phase of this, and we have analyzed it now for five months. So if you want to further analyze it, you can.
Well, I'm just asking.
But we are now in the, in the mode of being, we're going to be voting on this.
Okay, as a board member, I haven't seen the contract, so I can't vote on something. I haven't been able to read, so like...
Mr. Placko can show it to us.
So we're going to do that right now? You're going to, like, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, and, you know, we already went through finance, and we had the presentation at the board meeting, so I think we're kind of going backwards. Why are we not receiving?
We're doing double word and going backwards and getting spaghetti.
So first of all, let's go in order here. So the resolution that you're making is to add this to the agenda. I think it'll be added as a separate agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a resolution on the table to add, what, let me write this down. So your resolution is to add, Mr. Fishel, I want to make sure I write it down correctly. So your resolution is to add?
Yeah, so the, to accept the contract from Armor Linings, A-M-O-R Linings.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, agenda?
Yeah.
Item?
For $12,000.
To Excel.
$12,000 for what?
Undercoating 40 buses.
One bus or 40?
Forty buses.
Let me go ahead and get this real quick. So, resolution to add agenda item to accept the, what's the name of the company again?
Armor, A-R-M-O-R Linings.
Thank you.
For $12,000 to undercoat 40 buses. And just so everyone here knows, we, we have about 50 buses that are in service on a daily basis, transporting the kids. So if 10 will be done by the other company, the other 40 can be done by this company, and we will, beyond the path of saving, I've done the math, between four and a, five and a half million and $6 million over the next 20 years, and our buses, which presently rot out at 12 years and cannot be used, will now last 20 years. And we won't be spending $120,000 a bus is what they cost today. So this is going to be a big savings, many millions of dollars to the district.
So, Mr. Placko, that would go follow the finance and audit agenda items?
And to clarify, there was two different quotes sent this afternoon. The one for $12,000 was to be sprayed at the West Middlesex, Pennsylvania location for $12,000, so we'd have to transport the buses.
Right, we will need to drive them there to be treated.
The second quote was for $14,775, which was a spray here on site.
And they no longer have time, the time ran out. They, they're too busy to, to do that now, so they can't, can't do that.
Okay, and again, that'll be added after the items that are already on the finance and audit agenda, so it's a separate agenda item.
Separate.
All right, and Mrs. Brewster, your second item, I heard?
Yes.
All right, any discussion on that?
On the adding? Although I'm going to go on record again, is to say, I haven't had an opportunity to even look at these contracts, so I have no idea whether they're good or not. We don't have, I mean, we don't have any analysis of what that's going to cost.
Do I have a question?
Like, clarification on a lot of this.
So any discussion on adding it, though, real quick?
Yes, I have, I have, I have a reservation on adding it, but...
So as far as adding the agenda item, any other discussion?
I have a question on the, this threshold for the 10 buses. What was that threshold level?
Well, let's do that for discussion when we come to that piece. This is really just about adding it. So we have a second, can you call the roll, please?
Laura Kuduski?
Nay.
Lunda Gracie?
Nay.
Denise Brewster?
Yes.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Daskini?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, there was no other old business, I believe?
Well, I have one more item.
Okay, again, per our board, boardmanship, I'm sorry, per our boardmanship, though, I did send them out and ask for everybody to send those things so that we have time to consider it.
I understand, I've been working on something, and so it's, it's last minute.
Okay, but the last minute things are hard for us, as we're saying. So we made an agreement among the board that those would be sent in advance, so we need to follow that.
I understand. So I've been working on this and it's last minute, so I'm going to make a resolution to remove the responsive classroom program from the Riverside Local School District, along with all training materials and any other hard copy materials that are on, in Riverside Local School District.
Okay, so you're making a resolution to add that to it?
I'll add that, yeah.
So are we just throwing our, our...
So wait, let's, so you're making a resolution to add, tell me exactly how you want this to read.
Remove the responsive classroom program.
Okay.
From the RLSD Riverside Local School District, along with all training materials and hard copy materials.
Again, this would be added to the curriculum agenda after all other agenda items, so is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on adding it?
So can I just ask a question on adding things that we asked for in advance, as far as, we're just going to throw that out the window? I'm just curious, like, we're just bringing things up at the table now?
Well, that's a boardmanship item, so we know that we agreed to things at the board table. Again, they're not being followed, but they're, as far as adding the resolution. Any other discussion on adding it? All right, can you call the roll, please?
Lunda Gracie?
No.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Daskini?
Aye.
Laura Kuduski?
Any other old business? All right, Mr. Fishel, I believe you had new business?
New business? What did I give for new business?
Scheduling a working session?
Oh, yeah, okay, I thought that was already done, but I was looking at scheduling a work session, but I think that's already been done. I think, I think there's already information that, that covers that. Isn't there?
I don't, I guess I don't know.
So I wanted to have a work session, but this was about having a meeting with a different school district board.
You said earlier about setting goals.
What's that?
Setting goals, setting goals.
Oh, okay, that too, right. So, so the other thing that, that I wanted to bring up was, I think the board, the board has not done this in the past. When we hire our current superintendent, Mr. Dr. Rotino, we did not do anything in writing about expectations and requirements. And I had asked to do that, we didn't do that as a board, and I think that we need to have a work session to go ahead and create written expectations and requirements, because I think it's unfair to our superintendent to operate in a job without knowing what the board's written expectations and requirements are. So I think it's very important for us to do that.
So I just want to, we had an entire six weeks during which we did the evaluation process of our superintendent and our treasurer. Those items were sent out, those, that includes goals. That's what this board, minus Mr. Keeney, because he wasn't here at the time, decided would be the goals for the superintendent for the coming year. Those are stated in his evaluation, which was just delivered last week.
Oh, wait, it was delivered? I wasn't informed of that. Who delivered it?
You were.
As the president and the vice president, we always deliver year after year.
Okay, but I didn't know it was delivered. When was it delivered?
It has to be done prior.
When was it delivered?
Last Monday.
Yeah, last, was it Monday? Yeah, so it has to be done at the end of the, so it was, should have been done by August 1st, but we had an extension due to some schedules. So whatever Monday was, it was delivered.
Okay, so that's good, but that's an evaluation. That's not, that's not a written format of expectation and requirement.
Did you read the document?
Mr. Fishel, you had the opportunity to read that document for six weeks.
I gave suggestions, which you said, which you said you did not need. And, and so the suggestions I gave, you said you didn't need. I would like to have a work session so that we could do a formal document, instead of just an evaluation form with responses, I would like to do a formal, formal document that has itemized expectations and requirements, which I think would be more fair to our superintendent. And I think the evaluation, evaluation form does not reach that level.
So it's not just an evaluation form, it did set expectations for the next school year, and it is on the form that you were given to give us feedback.
I understand that, but expectations and requirements can be different than goals. And so I, I think that we...
They're listed as goals.
I, I think that we need to do a, a work session to develop that document.
So we have a time on September 12th. Is everybody available to do a work session that day?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the tennis is good.
Would that be at six? Yeah.
Would that be at 6:00?
It will be at 6:00. Mr. Placko, can you add that to the calendars?
The calendar, put out the notes.
Thank you.
I still have some reservations about that. I mean, the, the document that we prepare for evaluations is lengthy, it's, it's complete, it's well-articulated, it's asked for input by every board member. We meet an executive session about the evaluation forms and the goals that are set, and we outline how those goals have been met in the past year, going forward, what the goals are requested for the following year. Everybody agrees to that, we send that form out, we ask for input, that input is then entered into that evaluation. I mean, it goes out, I don't know how many times I sent that out. So I, I'm just, I'm just going on record...
Thank you for doing the work on that.
Yeah, well, I'm just going on record as saying that we already have that document, so I'm not exactly sure why we have to do this.
And again, you did say that, you know, to provide input, and I did. And then we talked about some things, suggestions I had, and I understood waiting on some, but there was one in particular that I thought should be happening as a precursor to what we expected in '25, '26, and you didn't include it. And I think it's critical to academic improvement.
Again, we have a, a work session scheduled on September 12th at 6:00 PM, so we can take this up at that time. All right, any other new business? All right, that brings us to the committee report. So the first up is superintendent's business advisory. Those meetings are just been scheduled for the year, so we will have reports in the next coming months. That brings us to curriculum and programming committee and facilities liaison, Ms. Brewster.
Okay, for facilities liaison, we haven't had another meeting, so I'm sure that there'll be something hopefully at the next meeting that we have. For the curriculum programs committee meeting, we held it on August 13. Dr. Rotino reviewed the enrollment and pointed out that Riverview has five sections of kindergarten with 96 students, and there are 102 students in the first grade with four teachers. He recommended adding a fifth-grade teacher to work in the pot area, pulling out students for support, and there was not another class, is that right?
We're adding the intervention specialist.
They're adding an intervention specialist, which was Cheryl Lanley's suggestion, to assist students in the pot area, pulling in the, out and providing some assistance, and, because there's not another classroom available in, in that building.
When we, yeah, the suggestion to add that was for early intervention for all students, not just specialized students.
Yeah.
So we came out of that.
Right, that's why I didn't use the word intervention. Yeah, okay. All right, so, and we, we did learn that Fairway Pines is not completed. It's, I think you said about two-thirds completed?
Oh, it's more than that.
More than that? All right, and so our superintendent said he... All right, and so, um, our superintendent said he would secure the current number of students attending our schools from that development. I think it's important to know that, because, um, you know, with the Heasley development, uh, in kindergarten through grade four, we had 150 students come into Buckeye. And, you know, of course, there were other numbers across the board, but that, that's a lot to absorb, and in light of a new development that's being proposed, we just want to be sure that we have space for our students. There's enough classrooms, and we don't have a lot of wiggle room. So, uh, that's just something we're keeping an eye on. Uh, Dr. Rotino, uh, will share the highlights of the administrative leadership retreat at your presentation tonight.
Yes.
And Dr. Malakar, uh, gave an overview of the career electives available for, uh, high school students. And she's done an excellent job creating these opportunities for our high school students. So, um, you know, that was something Mr. Keeney did, had not heard before, but, um, great job. And, um, currently, Dr. Malakar is creating the schedule for the staff and service days, which I think just came over today. Okay. Um, a review, um, of the history of the responsive classroom program, uh, used in our elementary schools since 2021 and purchased with federal grant funding, uh, took place. Um, we were told that it's not a program, so parents were not notified. It was stated that there are, were behavior issues. They use it in 15-minute morning meetings daily. Teachers were trained with social-emotional learning. Some people know it as SEL. At the middle school, there are advisory periods or intervention times at the high school. And it's not a sit-down time. And so, um, materials were shared, um, for Mr. Keeney and I to review, and we switched off and were able to get that back to you. Our next meeting will be held on September 23rd at 7:30 AM.
That brings us to buildings and grounds operations committee and alumni association.
So, in the alumni association, uh, the big thing that's coming up is this Saturday is an all-class picnic, and all alumni are invited. And, um, Fire and Ice, that is right down the road, is donating two-sheet pizzas. And, uh, more alumni are, are desperately needed to come. Uh, so, the alumni association has, over the last couple of years, been doing some work to grow the number of people that are involved in the alumni association, association events. And, uh, it is accompli- accomplishing that slowly, and, and they're always asking for more alumni to, to join. So, anyway, it's an all-class, uh, picnic this Saturday. It's going to be mostly in the Riverside High School cafeteria. As far as the buildings and grounds, uh, we have been through various different interviewing and hiring processes, and one of them, I believe, is on the scheduled agenda for tonight. Right, Mr. Placco? The, the ranking and then...
There's two different resolutions. One is that we do the official ranking.
One.
And one is to approve the construction contract. We'll go on, we'll, we'll hit that again.
So, you're going to hear about that. And so, um, the, we've been meeting mostly on the items that are related to the addition that's going to be put on. And tonight, we'll be approving, uh, the contractor to do that. And be pretty close to getting going. At that point, uh, drawings will have to be made. Decisions will have to be made as to how much additional money gets added to the $2.5 million grant that Dr. Malakar had most famously achieved in getting, and, uh, which will improve the offerings we have for the students here, uh, in, in, in areas where they can learn a trade or a skill, to where maybe they don't have to go to college and pick your number, create $100,000 worth of debt, and they can go right to work. And oftentimes, company, uh, there are companies in the area, uh, that want to interact with us and, and help in the process, so that they hire these people. So, they'll be staying local and, and be benefiting the community. So, all of this is working very well. So, that's, that's what's going on. And what we are going to have to do is decide how much more than the $2.5 million that, that the state has given us in a grant that we're going to put into that, because it's going to be added to the building. And as you add something, the question always is, how far do you go into the building? Like, if you have air conditioning, how far will you reach with that air conditioning? Uh, and how much does that cost and other things? So, we will be doing the work on that. And TDA, I believe, is, is the architect. And, uh, our, our, uh, construction, uh, liaison will be helping with that, our owners rep. So, uh, that's where we are in buildings and grounds.
Thank you. Next is policy committee and legislative liaison.
I have nothing.
We didn't have a meeting. I, I don't know what our next policy...
Should be soon.
Thank you.
So, we'll have to schedule a policy meeting. Uh, we also have the board policy handbook that we have to make some updates to, so we can try and tackle that all at the same time. Um, and legislatively, people are on, um, hiatus for the summer down in Columbus, so I don't... I mean, there's things to report, but I'll save them, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Brings us to the superintendent's report.
All right, uh, got a lot today. I know we've been here for a while, but it's a really exciting time as it's back-to-school time. Uh, first and foremost, one thing to be really proud of is the personalized learning journey we've been on, um, as a part of our strategic plan, is featured on the Ohio Department of Education workforce as a case study. Uh, kind of the quote I took from it is, "This case study is aimed to sho- exa- aim to showcase exemplary practices in personalized learning implementation across various schools and districts in Ohio. The case studies offer valuable insights and real-world examples for other educators and administrators looking to adopt or improve personalized learning strategies in their own." So, we've been highlighted by the Ohio Department of Education workforce for our practices and the case study. Uh, one of the next steps in personalized learning was that pilot initiative we had with our Auburn students. We had our Auburn Academy meeting. Uh, it was actually this Monday, rescheduled from the day of the storm. Uh, we did not expect the turnout that we had. We were really impressed with all of the families who came, and the excitement that was, um, the excitement that was reached from that, uh, meeting. Uh, we, we explained the program. We had a couple of questions asked here and there, but they're really a lot more excited about the possibilities that exist with our Auburn Academy. Kind of worked through a lot of the questions that were there, including, are students going to be in here? Uh, we, we said they're going to go into different rooms. They're going to move throughout the building. Kind of, they are going to get what they need to be successful. Uh, it really had a positive, uh, impact with that. Aside from Auburn students did start Auburn today. Uh, so, the Auburn Academy doesn't start till our school starts, but they did start, um, their coursework at Auburn. Next up, we had our district retreats, uh, as scheduled. We did have a month... We had a number of retreats scheduled for our specialized staff. We had a all-district leaders retreat originally scheduled, followed by a principals and assistant principals, uh, retreat. We had to pivot after the storm. Um, we had the one scheduled that actually at, um, Jordan Creek Park. Needed to pivot because the next day after the storm, we had a lot of, uh, principals. We had a lot of leaders without power in their houses. Needed to give them a day to kind of get re-associated, press pause, um, so we can actually get some good work out, out of them. Um, in our district leadership retreat, which really focused with all of our building leaders, as well as our district, uh, directors and, uh, central office, we did a follow-up on the human-centered design process in which we started, uh, the previous year. We worked at the Hive at Lakeland and kind of talked about leading with empathy and starting with empathy. Um, we took a look at the, the revamped Community Kindness Day. Did kind of a review of that, what was good, what was bad. And scheduled Community Kindness Day, uh, for this year. It is actually the Tuesday before we go on Thanksgiving break. Uh, so, we'll be district-wide. You will get an invite to that, uh, if you'd like to take part in that. Uh, we'll have all of our schools do something, um, for community kindness. And really, one of the things that come out of that is, it gives the idea of giving thanks and giving thanks to our community for putting it on that day. So, we'll be creating different, uh, community kindness activities from that. We talked about adult coaching and accountability practices and kind of the expectations for, um, those types of things. And then, we finished with, uh, with the book study we did this year with all the directors about creating moments. Book from Dana and Chip Heath dealing with, uh, culture and climate and how to really elevate and turn it into, uh, turn a normal day into a special moment that people remember and how to really work to appreciate. And we challenged all of our district directors and principals to create moments for their adults in their building, and then in turn, have them turn around and create moments for those students. So, we, we did, we did some work on that. And then, our, all of our districts created a moment, or participated in a moment of their own where Dr. Malakar and I, in our kind of evil ways, set up a scavenger hunt at Jordan Creek Park. Um, sent our directors and admin on a scavenger hunt throughout the park, even down to the creek. Um, and as they were walking up, they says, "This is part of our wellness plan," and I kind of laughed at them. There's still a clue that, uh, Mrs. Lanning and, uh, Mr. Caravan's group is looking for.
Missing clue.
But, um, we, we had to, we gave prizes to ours. It was a really kind of great end of the day, where we did a lot of team building as well, kind of working with... We assigned teams, uh, welcomed our new administrators into the group, um, and did that. In the morning of that day, we did a abbreviated, uh, building leadership retreat, where we focused on what does it mean to be an instructional leader and what that, what kind of that goal is and what an instructional leadership in, uh, current education is. And we did a data dive into some of our preliminary state assessment data and state report card data, taking a look to make sure that we were referring everything correctly and that it does look, um, correct from that standpoint. And that is continuing to come out. So, nothing like that is finalized to this point, which we'll get. That is a data point. We also did a retreat for our secretaries. This is, we'll get back to this in a second, but we did a retreat for secretaries, too, on Friday, our admin assistants kind of came together for the first time in a long time to discuss kind of universal protocols, especially with the new vestibules in all the legacy buildings, um, as well as some kind of universal, uh, best practices using it from campus. Uh, today, this morning, we were, we were available to do an AI certification for our principals and assistant principals. And this is really exciting. Uh, from a grant front to the permanent educational, um, uh, workforce, we were able to earn a state-recognized credential in artificial intelligence for our 15-building level administrators. Um, and this is out, and this is the work from Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor's Office. Um, and really, we will, um, I actually tweeted a picture out this morning of us doing that and tagged him, and he actually replied back saying, "Uh, great to see Ohio educators are learning the way." This was an amazing four hours of, of use on using AI and the tools in AI and the available tools that are there, um, and how to use them to really make our jobs more efficient, uh, more effective, and really kind of personalized learning is a part of our journey. So, this training itself, uh, actually is, the state recognizes it as a universal credential. It's $2,000 of an individual, but because we applied for these grants, this was a grant that we received to kind of get that funding. And we can continue to apply ever in the month. So, as much as we can, they're going to, we're going to continue to train people in this, because it was so, uh, well-worked and really kind of universal. Our new higher orientation was yesterday. Uh, we introduced all staff to the Culture Playbook Strategic Plan and Portrait of Riverside Beaver. It was a really collaborative thing. This was all, uh, new certified and classified staff hired after, um, actually, the new year of last year. So, even some of them have been on, on board with us for a while. We wanted to take them through, kind of introduce them to really truly the, the hallmarks and the landmarks of what it means to work at Riverside. Um, the highlight of every year is the, uh, district bus tour, where Mr. Caravan narrates and tells his dad jokes, and, uh, they absolutely love it. Um, and then, the teaching staff continued through the afternoon in a Riverside-ready boot camp, um, in which they were worked with some of the tools that we have, like how to use it from the campus, how to log in, how to kind of work with LPDC to keep their license, uh, RUS, the RUS, Resident Educator Program, and all of that. So, um, that. This year, the alumni picnic, Mr. Fishel brought that up. Well, this year, the campus turned 75 years old. Uh, this September marks the 75th year since Riverside High School opened its doors. It is not the 75th anniversary of the class. I, I looked it up. That is the diamond anniversary and the diamond birthday, so, uh, that's exciting. We partially completed the building hosting... Uh, the building opened, uh, 75 years ago, and hosted 15 classrooms with 374 students in grades 7, 8, 9. I actually have a handbook from close to that that kind of goes through some of the things that are in there. It's really neat to, neat to look at. Grades 10, 11 that were added in 1950, and the first graduating class to walk across the stage was in 1952. So, I'm sure in a few years, we're going to celebrate that class as well. At that time, Henry Lamuth was the principal, um, and John R. Williams was the superintendent. So, John R. Williams got his name on the building, um, that is not yet actually out there, but across the hall. And then, had Mr. Lamuth, and I got his name on our middle school. Providing some construction updates. This is, I believe, from this morning, showing our campus vestibule. We have a final walkthrough tomorrow, but showing the pavers and the outside, the new entrance to the high school with the, the ramp coming in. Uh, the inside of it is way more spacious than it really looks like on the outside. Uh, our attendance officer as well, our school security officer will be in the vestibule park greeting our students in the morning. Uh, and you can see the secure walkthrough, uh, on the other end. Uh, the campus sidewalk was put in. We had the opportunity to replace some of that old dilapidated sidewalk, and so, we took advantage of that along the way. Track replacement, they are, they were spraying a, a little bit ago. They're, they're continuing to update that track so that it is complete by the tailgate. Uh, that is a labor process that's there. That is moved up from the anticipated completion date. So, that's one thing that's ahead of schedule that we're extending for. Hoping the rain holds off so they can finish up and not have to come back after the tailgate. Uh, but we do think that they're on schedule. It will not be striped for the tailgate, uh, because there are only two companies that do striping, uh, in the United States. And so, when we get on their schedule, uh, we get on their schedule. But, it will be ready for track season. Um, but, the, the sports teams of the fall that use that, that facility do not need the stripes. Additional changes, Mr. Alastair. Kind of, we already showed you the stalls in the bathroom and the... I did take a picture of those, of the new ceiling tiles in the lecture room, so remember the old ones. Uh, I wanted to kind of highlight some of that work that's being done there. Lamuth, uh, one thing that I know we didn't talk about, because we talked about it a lot, are the, the summer updates with fifth grade. The basketball court is installed, lined, painted, and ready for students. Four-square is out there as well. We are excited, um, from the, uh, KJL Foundation, which was formed after the tragic loss of Kobe Blument, is actually donating some benches to outside as well. And one of those benches will have a plaque in that will be named Kobe's Court. So, we're excited about that, um, too. Lamuth's vestibules are finishing up as we go. So, the new entrances, and ironically, on the night of the storm, I went to go look at Lamuth. When the power came back on, it really does look sharp at night. So, it's, it's really kind of lit up, and the, the back of it looks so much better than it did. Uh, the front vestibule as well, with the glass doors and openings, that you can see there, the office itself, um, in the next slide, you'll notice, is really lit up and really spacious. So, the new, uh, millwork is in as well, um, in there. And obviously, they have some construction cleanup to do on the inside of the vestibule looking out, but it's made a huge difference to that office and the front entrance of that building. Gym floor, we're working on it. Um, we've got rock... They're putting the plywood down and continuing to get through. It will not be ready for the start of school, but I know they're working to kind of get that through. It was going to be close pushing it as it is. There's the adjustment where they're putting the plywood down. Uh, with Buckeye Elementary, working on the construction. You can see the, um, they're kind of finishing up with some of that. There's some punchline items to kind of layer through. That office itself is new carpet to it. They've shifted some things around. Um, and they're, they're installing the awning. That's actually ahead of schedule. That was going to be a little bit delayed with that going in as well. Uh, really has made some changes to that school as you enter. Uh, there are the two office spaces. The one space on the left, that used to be Mrs. Smolin's office. That's not the part where we... Uh, families, as they come in. And then, Mrs. Smolin's office is back behind, um, into the other side. Walk through of the vestibule at Buckeye as well. School's back. We're really excited to have, welcome our students back to Riverside. We start on Monday with an all-staff convocation. It's the first time that I can remember, um, that we are having all-staff, both certified and classified journalists in the morning for the all-staff convocation in the auditorium. Uh, then, that's filled with three days packed with great, like I said, personalized professional development. August 22nd is the first day for students in grades 1 through 12. And our kindergarten students begin the week of August 26th with a stagger start throughout the week. And if there are any kindergarten students out there for the class of 2037 who have not yet registered, uh, please make sure you get that as soon as you can. Orientation is Wednesday, the 21st, and I believe that's when you guys will be handing out t-shirts to all of the class of, oh, I don't even know.
2037.
2037. Wow. Class of 2037 will get their, get their shirts. And that's a fun day for those who have participated. It's really good to see those kind of guys coming. And that concludes my report.
That brings us to treasurer's report and committee update. So, finance, audit, personnel committee, and boost organization liaison, Mr. Keeney.
The finance personnel committee meeting was held on August 13th. Our treasurer, Mr. Placco, reviewed financials that are appearing on tonight's agenda, which he will highlight tonight, are the negative financial impact of the RIT developments and conquered to our financial forecast over the next 10 years. Some factual information on upcoming Lake County School Financing District renewal letter. Mr. Placco also spoke about a new requirement from the state auditor whereby all employees are mandated to complete a state fraud trading course. Uh, the district will purchase three new, uh, ten, three new vans with seating for 10 passengers each from the Permanent Improvement Fund. A new badge system will be implemented, which will be funded by the federal safety grant. Under personnel updates, uh, Mrs. Olive talked about the hiring of several tutors, classified personnel and classified substitutes who will be hired this evening. personnel and classified substitutes who will be hired this evening. We will also be hiring a new school resource officer for Lamuth Middle School, Officer Raymond O'Brien. Our next meeting will be held on September 23rd at 8:30 AM.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Treasurer's Report, Mr. Placo.
All right. As we always do, we'll review our July 2024 financial report, which is available on Board Docs and on the Treasurer page on the website. The total cash balance of all of our funds are just shy of $47 million. The general fund balance at the end of July was just over $30 million. The Permanent Improvement Fund, you'll notice the number's a little bit lower because it's going back a little bit to 8.9 million. Of that, 6.5 million is available for projects, 2.3 million in cupboard. For the revenue for July, we received just shy of 10.5 million, that includes 626,000 in unrestricted state foundation payments. You'll notice that increased from prior months as the, we are in the next year of the biennium and some of the funding for transportation increased, so that's where that increase came from. We also received 9.4 million dollars from our property tax advance and 224,000 from our return of advance to the federal grant fund. Interest revenue for July was $103,000, our, the current Star Ohio interest rate is 5.44%. Our investment account through Redtree is at 4.808% for our total overall yield, just shy of 5%. And our expenditures for June, I shouldn't say July, is just shy of 3.9. I want to just kind of go through real quick, this is what our state funding report looks like, and there's a lot of numbers on the page, we've reviewed this in the past. We are now in the fourth year of the implementation of the Fair School Funding Formula, you know, the state budget's only a two-year budget, it's a six-year phase-in, but they can't commit the future biennium, the, you know, budget process, so right now we're in year four. The column A on the left is what's called our base state funding, this is actually based on 2019 fiscal year, in my world, but right now we're in fiscal year 2025, so a little bit ahead. Column B is calculated state funding, so that's basically saying if the Fair School Funding Plan was fully phased in at year six, that would our funding would estimate to look like 3.8 million. So our phase-in is a negative 1,281,000 to implement the formula, so the far on the right column is actually what we receive. There's also a caveat that you can't receive, there's a temporary transitional aid guarantee, basically says you can't receive what, less than what you received in 2019. So if you look at the total, column C is negative 1,281,000, they give it back to you at the line below to get you back to your, your funding number. And then transportation increased, the funding increased to 1.6 million, so our total formula funding is just, just shy of 7.4 million. The only thing I find interesting when I look at this is if the Fair School Funding Plan was fully implemented, they give us 3 million and $12,000 to educate 4,200 students, yet we get 1.623 million for transportation funding, which is only, is not all of our students, that's not our primary function, so it's kind of, to me, it makes, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but that's, that's how it works, so. That's where we see, we've seen our increase the last two years is on the transportation funding because we're on that funding here. Couple, just quick updates that I did put on slides on tonight's board agenda, in the Finance Consent Agenda, we select our delegate and alternate for the OSBA Business Meeting that's on December 11th in Columbus at 2:30 PM. On Wednesday, September 4th at 7:00 PM, Concord Township has their public hearing on the Villas of Cantorwood RID that they're implementing. I plan on attending that meeting and speaking in opposition, as I, you know, it's been sent correspondence previously on the Iridge RID, so I should be there personally this time to, to speak. And then lastly, on August 26th, Dr. Retein and I will be in Columbus for the City of Mentor Tax Appeal Hearing for that, what we call the Shamrock Property, that land by, behind Home Depot in the corner of Route 2 and 44, opposing the tax exemption. That concludes my report.
Do we want to pick the delegate in the backup?
We might as well do it now, we can spill it in and vote on it.
Before it comes to the, okay.
As of right now, I've only heard from Ms. Brewster as attending that I've heard.
Anyone else going?
I'm not going to be able to attend this year.
What are you going to do?
What does that all involve?
That's, well, go ahead.
It's the OSBA, the House School and Boards Association Capital Conference, they run it every year, it's basically, it starts on Sunday, it runs through Tuesday, it's basically a professional development conference for board members and also school administrators attending as well.
And what are those dates?
It's September, it's November 10th through the 12th, it's a Sunday through Tuesday.
Well, I suppose that'd be good for me.
So do one of you want to be the delegate and the other the alternate?
I don't know what's involved with being the delegate, but.
You, you get to vote.
You basically have a business meeting and you vote on the platform.
Okay, I can do that.
And we review that as a board.
I'll do that, you can be the alternate.
And the alternates is there, you don't have to attend as an alternate unless Ms. Brewster can't attend, then you can't attend either.
And Ms. Brewster, Mr. Keeney, the voting, the way that that goes is the board, the OSBA will put out a document of what they're going to cover, and the board had made a policy that said the board needs to agree on how you're going to vote, and then you would vote on that item, but if they changed the item, if they amended the item, you wouldn't be able to vote on it because the board has to agree on how you're voting on, on an item, so, so just be aware of that.
Okay. Just so everyone knows, there was a news story today on Fox 8 regarding state, the state financing formula, it was kind of interesting, I don't know if anybody else saw it, but if you want to pull it up, you can take a look at it. I meant to send it to you to say.
I don't know which channel.
Fox 8.
Ms. Kreniski, did it make sense to you?
Nothing with the state funding formula makes sense, right?
I mean, that's what Gary's been saying for years.
You get to the, you just, that's the same number anyway, so I don't know what you have all the other.
Yeah, well, they put a disclaimer on it, it's, you know, I forget how they said it, but it's supposed to be the fair funding formula, but not, I don't know, they were putting a spin on it to say, it's really not fair, but we're trying to figure it out, so.
So there you go, Gary, they're still working on it, yeah.
Yeah. All right, that brings us to public comment. So anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves and their topic, comments are limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment tonight? All right. That brings us to our consent agenda, so first up is Finance and Audit, Mr. Keeney.
I'll make a resolution to approve the monthly financial reports and check payment register for July 2024.
You put item G, and you read item G and you feel satisfied, or, excuse me, I have the H.
For items A through G.
So you just read right here, under Recommended Action, Motion to Approve Items Listed.
Next page.
Add one more page? One more page?
I, I know where I am.
Yeah, so it's just this right here, and you put the, your numbers in place.
So Motion to Approve the Item Listed on the Finance Audit Consent Agenda as Recommended by the Treasurer, which would be A through G.
No second.
Any discussion? Mr. Placo, you want to call the roll?
Scott Fishel.
Hi.
Dennis Keeney.
Hi.
Lori Kreniski.
Hi.
Glenn McGrassy.
Hi.
Denise Brewster.
Hi.
Motion carried, and then Mr. Keeney, there's a new agenda item.
Will Mr. Fishel add in during focus, which isn't on.
Okay, so.
But it makes sense that Mr. Fishel state that resolution?
Yeah, that's fine. So it's making a motion to approve the resolution, and you see it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution that will be stated by Mr. Fishel.
Ms. Kreniski, you wrote it down word for word, I should probably read it word for word from what you wrote.
It's a, it's a resolution to add, I'm sorry, a resolution to accept the contract from Armor Linings for 12,000 under quote 40 buses.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It would be helpful to actually see the contracts before we vote on it, they're usually attached in an agenda item, not being able to.
So I guess my, I guess my question that I had earlier was, this is for a $12,000 expenditure, the, what was the expenditure for the 10 buses?
It was about 3,000.
3,000 bucks. What is the threshold for having to have?
So every organizational meeting in the, there's a, there's a resolution in the organizational meeting in January, it proves standing authorizations for the Treasurer and Superintendent, and during, in that, in that standing authorization says that the Superintendent is the purchasing agent, and can purchase up to, up to $15,000 without, anything over 15,000 goes to the board.
So this, this could have gone that same route, correct?
Correct, it doesn't need board approval.
Okay, why, why did we not go that route if it was recommended?
We just received the contract today.
But I think it's because our maintenance, our bus director, our transportation director recommended a different approach based on the research he did, so that's why they went.
We went with the, we went with the approach based on what Mr. Andre recommended and also wanted to see, to make sure that it was, everything he said it was, and I understand there was a study with that, that was his, and his mechanic's recommendation was to make sure that this, this approach where they bring out their own things to our facility, including water and all of that, so it was off-site, we could do it in the back where there wasn't a leak, and then also it was the issue to, we'll, you know, start with 10, see how that works and continue on.
And it was my understanding that, that was a two-step process as opposed to this one being a one-step process?
It is.
Okay.
It is supposedly cleaner, from what he said.
And just so everyone understands, the, both companies had presented information based on one report, which was the Crown product being used in the study in Canada with their military for five years. So instead of using the copycat product, we know that the product that was studied by the Canadian military, the Crown product, we know what that does because it's a five-year military study. That's why I was recommending and am recommending the, the buses be, be treated with the Crown product. The other one may be good, we just don't know.
I just think, I think this whole thing just circumvents the authority that we have given our administrative staff to do what they feel is in their best interest and bring to the board things that need to be approved, that are over the threshold that we need to approve. I, for one, don't feel the need to micromanage and duplicate research that they've already done, and if they've done that, I, I am confident that they've done their due diligence, and if there's a need to bring that to the board for further consideration, we would bring that up in buildings and grounds, I think, because that's where we talk about those types of contracts. I haven't seen them, so I, I don't even know how we can vote yea or nay.
Well, if you'll recall, the whole presentation was made to the board.
I did, I do recall that.
Recently. The information was given.
So, so obviously there was some miscommunication along the way, it was, it was known that this process was in the works, so we'll try to have better communication in the future and.
Well, I, I think the idea was brought up, so I, I don't think, again, the role of our staff, the transportation director is to take a look at this, work with his mechanics, figure out what he would recommend to the district, and I think that's what he did, he looked at both products and then he made his recommendations. So I don't know that it was a miscommunication, you know, again, he looked at both products.
Maybe it was a miscommunication that the process was completed, and maybe a courtesy, you know, well, we got 10 buses done.
Yeah.
But they're not, they're, they're not complete yet, they're in the process, we signed the, it was just, the approval just went through, and I think we've issued the PO for it, and it was coming out of their recommendations, the mechanics and all that, that this sounds like it's going to be a great thing, we believe everything was there, and we just wanted, wanted to see it on 10 buses before we go. So that was, that was their recommendation and I followed their.
Okay.
I do apologize for not following up with the board, although we were doing 10 and going through that, because it was such a low threshold of, of a PO that we had discussed in. We had discussed piloting with 10, and they weren't completed, they were in the process.
So can I just make, can I just ask a question though, are we going to routinely be bringing up, you know, items for consideration that are purchase orders or things that we are already authorizing our district personnel to purchase, to, to issue purchase orders under the amount of $15,000, it has to come to board approval for $15,000 or greater? If everything that we're going to approve is going to have to be, if we're going to ask to approve that, you know, I'm, I'm not sure why we're even approving this, it's, it's something that the district had already made a recommendation to do on their own, they don't need board approval for under $15,000, so I'm not exactly sure like why we're doing this.
I can answer that if you would like. So for the past however many years, 15 years or so, this board has done very little to take care of his, his assets, and the taxpayers own these things, so when our buses, when I found out that our buses basically rot out from the underside at 12 years and are no longer usable, and other districts are getting 20 years out of their buses, and came across this study that showed it would save us five and a half to six million dollars just taking care of our, just taking care of our buses, which unfortunately this district had not done in the past. So now I'm looking for this district to take care of what the taxpayers are paying for and get the most out of their money. You're looking at five and a half to six million dollars. We have, we have a bus maintenance garage that, that the, the mechanics suffer through because it's not, it's, it's not suitable as a bus maintenance garage. The savings that we're going to have on these buses will build a whole building for, for the maintenance people so that we have a real bus maintenance garage. We need to start doing things to make the dollars go as far as possible, making them the most efficient and effective use possible for our taxpayers. And then additionally, that helps with the students as we continue to do these things and now start to take care of the buildings, which have not been taken care of, thus the $98 million report of deferred maintenance by, by Alaski. Now when we start to take care of those, our teachers are going to have a better environment in which to teach, the students will have a better environment in which to live. In our own boardroom, you can see daylight at the bottoms of the windows because they don't close properly. It's an embarrassment. When I first got on the board, I had two teachers come to me and explain to me how horrible it is teaching in the room, they didn't even have screens on their windows at that time, they couldn't open the windows when it was 85 and humid and they were on the second floor. And then windows they could open, they were afraid to open because without a screen, if a bee came in and stung a student and a student was allergic and they didn't know who was allergic or not, they were suffering, they were baking inside. We are going to start taking care of, of these properties and these buildings and the buses. So this is the bus topic, we're starting to take care of the buses. And when you have, when you have 10 buses out of 50 being treated, even that's not sufficient, so we're going to do the other 40.
So I'm going to go back and I'm going to say, I'm not exactly sure why we're putting this resolution on the board, because that's not the question I had, the question was, why are we, why are we approving something that's under the threshold of what it is that we don't have to approve? Our administration has the authority to make those approvals, if we want to change that approval level, then we should do that within our organizational meeting every year and bring it down to $3,000 or whatever level you feel like you need to have the control over. We've already given them the ability to do that, they've done their homework, it's not that we're not going to do this, we're doing it, it's just not the firm that you choose to have. So I'm just asking, like what, that's not my question, is whether or not we're going to under quote buses, the question is why are we putting something on the agenda that doesn't need to be on the agenda?
Well, I can explain that also, you're talking about two different things. There is an approval limit, but that doesn't mean that everything that under that dollar amount is going to be taken care of by our Superintendent and Treasurer, that's not their job, okay? We need to have a full team effort, and we cannot expect them every time that there's something that's underneath the $15,000 that they're going to do the work to go ahead and approve that.
It is our job to ask them to take those things under their advisement, it's not It's not our job to actually do their job.
Okay, so then when we are writing our expectations and requirements, we can cover them and that'll be in our work session.
So again, I don't disagree with the undercoding. I do, again, feel that we should support our district administration in decisions that they made when they do the research to do this. So just to kind of put that on record. Is there any other discussion?
Okay, all I have to say is now if we have those 10 buses done and the 40 buses done, we'll have 50 buses done, but we will have something to compare the two products to. It's my understanding that this is not a one and done thing, it needs to be reapplied periodically and so now we'll have something to compare these two products with going on in the future and then we can decide if we're going to go split again or if we're going to go with one product.
So why wouldn't we do 10 and 10 to compare that?
Well, because we're coming into winter, we have a lot of buses and let's get them done.
Well, and my understanding is that it doesn't have to be reapplied, that this is a, how good, 20 years?
It's every year the application is done. So when you take, let's just say $15,000, you take $15,000.
I just asked a question, so I understand.
Yeah, it's done every year.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to say, since Kyle's not here, our transportation person, he talked about the 55 square miles, is that it?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five square miles that we cover. They do rotate the buses year to year or so, it's not, they're not always on the same type of run and getting that wear and tear. But I think that, you know, from what I understand, we finally caught up on updating our bus fleet. $125,000 a bus now, who knows what it's going to cost in the future, but it's an investment made and how do you make it last? And I mean, you know, we're spending more for cars and, you know, it's your choice whether you want to preserve it or not and protect it in the climate that we're in. But, you know, I'm looking at Gary's report tonight, you know, the state isn't helping us with that measly little one point, whatever. We have to do what we need to do to help ourselves, to protect these buses so that they can be on the road longer and it's a way to generate money, just like you were able to earn interest, you were able to do some creative financing there so that you could save money and apply it to other things. That's how you get our mechanics off the cold concrete floor, that they don't have lifts, they have to be there. And, you know, fixing buses, trying to turn wrenches they can't turn because it's so corroded. And it ends up being that, you know, if you need to wash your buses off because you have all that salt, it has to be done outside because there's no bus wash, no place to do it. And then they're all crowded right there where transportation is coming and going. So down the road, hopefully our savings will help alleviate that problem.
So again, I don't think that anyone's saying, let's not undercode the buses. That's not what the discussion about. It's about listening to our transportation director and the recommendation he's making to test 10 buses and see how it goes. So I think that's it, I think we're kind of going around in circles. Mr. Keeney, do you want to call?
Yeah, if we're done with discussion, Mr. Flacco, please call the roll. Scott Fishel?
Aye. Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Lori Korniski?
Nay.
Lynn Degrassi?
Nay.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda for personnel.
It's number 11. That's a lot. I know, there's a lot on the personnel.
A motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda, items A through F, as recommended by the superintendent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Flacco called the roll.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Lori Korniski?
Aye.
Lynn Degrassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to curriculum and programming.
Okay, so we have an addition?
It's separate. It's not being recommended by the superintendent, I don't believe, so it's second, it's an added addition.
We'll run the consent agenda first, then we'll do the addition.
Okay, all right, so under curriculum and programming, I move to approve items A through D. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, Mr. Flacco, can you please call the roll?
Lori Korniski?
Aye.
Lynn Degrassi?
Aye.
Denise Brewster?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Dennis Keeney?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings it to your added one.
So we have the added agenda item?
That's yours, that's under curriculum.
All right, so the added agenda item, did you write it down? Or did? Okay, all right. So there's a motion to, or I make a motion to add?
Nope, to approve.
To approve. Can't read your things.
There's a motion to approve removing responsive classroom program from RLSD with all training material, with all materials and training materials, is that how you wanted it read?
That's fine.
Okay, sir, a second.
Aye.
Any discussion?
You know, just go on record, I don't believe this is being recommended by the district at all, so at the end of the day, it is what it is. I guess I just want to be very clear for the administration what is expected to be removed from the classroom. I think Mrs. Brewster, you said that one of the things in the training is morning meetings. So are we telling the administration and the teachers that they need to remove morning meetings from their daily routine?
Well, morning meetings is a term that's used in responsive classroom, but for as long as I've been in education, there's always a meeting, whether you call it the morning meeting or whatever, but it's a get-together of the students in the morning, but it has more of an academic focus rather than the social emotional.
I get it, so I guess I want to be very clear on what do you guys want them to remove?
Okay, we want an emphasis on academics. So whatever's being discussed, it's academic focus.
But again, we're removing the training and the training materials and what are we telling them to stop doing?
Well, in other words, we're basically asking them to have more of a focus on academic improvement and less of a focus on, or in other words, these materials that are basically the morning meeting as it's termed, we would like to see more of an academic focus.
Yeah, I can answer that. So what we have is the opportunity to add 40, about plus or minus 40 hours of academic instruction and I think it's important. When I got on the school board, I stated my goal is to make Riverside the gold standard and I've come to find out in the last numbers I've seen, and maybe there's an update, but I haven't seen updated numbers yet, economically out of over 600 school districts in Ohio, economically we rank 71st. Scoring wise by the students, 246th. That's a big and huge chasm that we need to close. I mean, if we were at 100, maybe, maybe that's okay, but par would be 71. 246, we need to spend more time teaching reading, writing and arithmetic, okay? And so this will give us the opportunity and give the teachers more of an opportunity to teach the academics so when the kids take tests, they actually can score better, they'll learn better, they'll have a better education, they'll come out of school and we know the better education you have, the more money you make in your lifetime and we're looking for success for our students and that's the goal.
So let me ask a question, I don't even know, I'm not even going to ask a question, I just want to make a statement, that there are so many days when students come to school and they are not emotionally ready to participate or engage in a classroom, for whatever reason. They may come to school hungry, they may come to school tired, they may come to school, I don't know, they have, there are so many things that children struggle with and so we are, are we telling staff not to pay attention to a student's ability and readiness to learn in a classroom, which if we don't pay attention to those things, they're not going to succeed anyway, so I'm not exactly sure what we're trying to prove here. You know, all those things that go into it and forming relationships with students and having a student feel welcome and that somebody cares about them in their classroom, that's important stuff. It brings a student to a level of engagement in a classroom that they're going to be able to learn, succeed. We spend a lot of dollars on social, like, social work with contracts that we provide through the ESC, psychologists, you know, all kinds, we're paying all kinds of professionals to aid students with whatever is going on in their lives so that when they come here to learn, I mean, that is the goal, is to learn, that they're ready to learn, that they can be engaged in learning and we're, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, that you're asking our staff not to do that anymore. I would be so ashamed of this district if we ever did that. I don't even, I don't even know what to say.
Yeah, and any professional staff member, they've been trained to engage with students on all these levels, but the fact is, they like create procedures and rules and create a climate in their classroom, that's what they do. But right now they're following, you know, a social emotional curriculum of 15 minutes when, you know, when I saw throughout my experience either as a teacher or principal for 26 years, that you have your meeting and you're talking about, you know, the weather and the calendar and what you're going to learn today and those things and there's math and there's reading and language arts in there and you're setting up your next academic, you know, activity. And it isn't going to be, you know, we're spending all this time talking about some of the lessons that we're going to do on this. And, you know, since I've been in the district, I hear tidbits of academic improvement, but I've watched those test scores and we need to do better. And we're not going to get there if we don't start talking more about academic improvement and making sure that we have a focus on that in the classroom.
So if you take the time to visit the classrooms and see the program in place, that's exactly what they do. I've spent time in the classroom, I've been open-minded about trying to understand why everyone's against it, but if you take the time to go to the classroom, you would see how they're using it and that's exactly what they're doing. They're getting the kids engaged and learning in different ways early so that it's easy to get them going throughout the day. So again, I just wanted to be very clear for our district on what you're telling them to stop doing. You know, you're saying there's 40, I forget what number of hours, I think you said, what do you want them to remove to make that 40 hours, I guess is what I was asking and it's not very clear. So I guess if there's additional questions, we'll have to reach out and understand what that means.
I'd just like to make a comment. I did take some time to look through some of the workbooks for that program and in my mind, it seems to put a constraint on the teacher that she has to follow this when if she, you know, every single day they want to go through the same morning routine and a teacher within the first day or few days of a class can tell which students are going to have issues or not. And with this program, it seems like everybody then has to put on hold, you know, their progress for the day to deal with whatever an issue may be. Obviously, we have all this other support elsewhere. If a kid comes to school with, you know, just having a bad day or whatever, why should that student then drag down the rest room? He can be referred to one of the other professionals to handle whatever and then come back into the classroom. But to have faculty constrained to a program when if they can be more freely to do their profession and work with the kids in a way that, without having their hands tied to, you have to do this, you have to do this, and after school or at night, you go through this and make sure that tomorrow morning, you're all prepared, so why put that burden on them to do this after-hours things when I'm sure they have a lot of after-hour things to do already? And so in my mind, it just seemed like it was a real constraint on the faculty to implement this. They can still do what they want, but it won't be under this program. And that was my interpretation of what I wrote.
And one thing that I had a concern about is that parents have a right to know what's happening in their classroom with their child and, you know, this has not been communicated to parents. I checked with a few and said, do you know what this is? Oh, I've never heard of it. You know, and then when I asked in the programs committee, no, no communication had gone to parents about this, it's not a program. But yet, when I read about six or seven of those books, every one of them said that parents are partners, that parents should be involved. So I guess I had a problem with that as well.
So they do communicate to them when they come to orientation, they walk them through what's going to happen and they get a lot of communication. It may not be a district-wide communication, again, it's professional development. Do we communicate all professional development?
No, I mean, this was communicated because the board approved it, we've talked about this. I wish Mrs. Brewster or Mr. Keeney would have reached out to me and we could have talked about this because, Mr. Keeney, I would have explained to you how the teachers have a lot of flexibility in what they do in the morning.
And I'm sure they still will have, but it won't be under this program.
Well, and that's, I mean, we can just say, and Mrs. Brewster the same, we have also talked about the social emotional learning piece and how when you were at South Yucun Lynn Hurst, you saw a lot of need in students and we have some population of students that need that also. So we've talked about that at curriculum and programs. So we haven't, Mr. Keeney, I haven't talked with you about it at all and Mrs. Brewster, we didn't have the conversation other than us updating you and me bringing the materials yesterday or the day before, whenever it was we had our meeting. So we haven't had a thorough discussion on it and what you had hoped to achieve, again, when you talk about academics, every teacher in elementary school has done a meeting, a gathering, whatever you want to call it, that's academic focused, where they do calendar, they do math, they do the weather, all of that stuff is happening. So we'll have to have further discussions exactly on what it is you expect to have taken out of classrooms.
And some material talked about that you would see an improvement in academics, but we have a lot of improvement to achieve and this has been in place three years and we have some places where you see a little bit of improvement, but then you see a dip. And we're not seeing the amount of improvement and it still comes down to time on task and, you know, why are we adjusting our schedules to provide more minutes in reading and math and, you know, why are we adjusting so that we can have interventions for even high schoolers with our block schedule? Those are the kind of things that we need to hear more about. I think we've done a lot to train our staff to recognize and use some of the, you know, things that you'd like to see happening with kids, especially newer teachers coming in the door, but, you know, and positive ways to handle behavior, but, you know, ultimately we need to do some more with academic improvement.
So just one additional statement, if you would have taken some time to talk to our building principals and to some of the teachers, they are very supportive of the program, also Parkside, which is one of the best scoring elementaries that we have in our district, which everyone has given praise to on this board, they account this program has gotten them to where they are. You can ask Mr. St. Clair and the teachers there, they believe that this program has helped them make, have the success that they've had. So again, I mean, that's just my last kind of comment on this.
I think it's interesting that the state of Ohio is also coming to the conclusion that social and emotional well-being of students is an important topic there, making a point to make sure that college training programs are teaching new teachers coming out through their, the education programs, how to connect with students. So this isn't something that's going to go away just by removing a program from our school, it's something that college prep programs are going to be required to show the state and prove to the state that they have the ability and they have the curriculum that teaches these things to incoming teachers. This isn't something that's going away, this is something that the state is going to say, we have to address, kids have issues. Teachers are with students and staff are with students, not even just teachers, but cafeteria workers and bus drivers, they are all with students for a significant part of that student's day and I would just feel badly if that is a detriment to any student's ability to learn, that we don't do that, we would be a very uncaring society. It makes me sad that we should think about taking 15 minutes of our school day away from forging relationships, that that may be the only relationship a student has and studies have proven that relationships are very important in anything, even in a workplace. And studies have proven that relationships are very important in anything, even in a workplace. You know, for workplace and employees and whatnot, we train on those kinds of things all the time on how to treat employees and how to recognize when employees have issues and be able to refer them to assistants and whatever. I just, I just think it's sad, but I don't think that, I don't think that there is any teacher that's going to say, "I'm not going to be human" just because we take out a program from our school, so.
And no one's asking that.
Well, I'm just-
Any professional teacher knows how to relate to their students.
And if there are support mechanisms outside of the classroom, they're available and they can be referred, the teacher. The thing is, don't let one or two issues drag down the rest of the class. And these relationships, you know, happen all year long. You don't have to have every day, well, are you gonna get along with this one today? Are you gonna get along with that one today? They're gonna find their way through and the teacher's there to have a watchful eye and if there are issues, she'll bring them to attention. That's my opinion.
Our whole teachers are she's.
Okay, so any more discussion? So you wanna call the roll?
Just to clarify, it's a motion to remove responsive classrooms, so yes, vote is affirming to remove and no vote is to maintain. Just so no one gets confused on.
And what was the last one?
Just so no one gets confused, you know, just which way they're-
So an a vote is to remove it?
An a vote is to remove.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No, I'm gonna take the roll.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Nay.
Lynn Degrassi.
Nay.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to a consent agenda for Buildings and Grounds and Operations.
Make a motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds and Operations Consent Agenda as recommended by the superintendent, Items A through C. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Flacco, could you please call the roll?
Lynn Degrassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Fishel. So we have Item E that is the Construction Manager at Risk Firm Ranking and I make a resolution ranking the four firms that responded to the Riverside Local School District's request for statements of qualification from Construction Manager at Risk Firm for the Riverside Campus Improvement Project. Am I making a recommendation for approval?
There's a more detailed resolution attached ranking Cleveland Construction as number one.
So could you just expound on that?
Yeah, so we did a request for qualifications for Construction Managers at Risk, narrowed it down to a short list of four firms, we actually only had four firms submit, so we decided to make them all on the shortlist, received pricing proposals from those firms and did an analysis and interview with those four firms. And so the Buildings and Grounds Committee, along with the administration, ranked the firms. Cleveland Construction is number one and then there was three other firms, Gilbane, Turner, and Millstone were ranked second, third, and fourth based on our interviews and analysis.
So that's the ranking and so make a motion to approve that ranking.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, could you please call the roll?
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Lynn Degrassi.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And a follow-up on that, after the ranking, there is the Construction Manager at Risk Contract and on the recommendation of the Board's Building and Grounds Committee, the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby approves the attached, well, we haven't approved it, so I make a motion to approve the attached contract. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Should we read the whole thing, the resolution?
That would be my argument.
Yep, can we read the whole resolution, please?
Okay.
Or the, on the recommendation?
Okay, so I'll reread it, making an adjustment to the resolution. I make a resolution on the recommendation of the Board's Building and Grounds Committee, the Riverside Local School District Board of Education recommends the approval of the attached agreement between Cleveland Construction, Inc. and the Riverside Local School District Board of Education for Cleveland Construction, Inc. to serve as the Construction Manager at Risk for the Riverside Campus Improvements Project and also hereby authorizes the Board President and Treasurer to sign this agreement on behalf of the Board of Education and make a resolution that we approve that, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, could you call the roll, please?
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Lynn Degrassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Motion carried. Any, next is Board of Education Updates, any updates? Hearing none. Next Meeting Announcements, we have Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting September seventeenth at seven-thirty a.m. Curriculum Program Committee meeting September twenty-third at seven-thirty a.m. Finance and Audit Personnel Committee meeting September twenty-third at eight-thirty a.m. Board of Education meeting September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four and a special meeting on September twelfth at six p.m. All right, all right. Pursuant to Revised Code 121.22G8, I move the Board adjourns to executive session for the purpose of considering confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategies, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiate between the school district and other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance as provided in Revised Code 5709.73 to Revised Code 5709.75 in that the information is directly related to requests for economic development assistance under Ohio law or that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Yeah.
With no period.
Any discussion on that?
Before we vote, Mr. Carey, mine is actually a second resolution we'll approve before we officially go to executive session.
One more.
So the second resolution.
I'm here, you may.
Then we'll move.
All right, can you call the roll, please?
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Lynn Degrassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Motion carried. There's one more, so pursuant to Revised Code 121.22G8, I move that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment of expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project. The unanimous vote is required for this vote. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Lynn Degrassi.
Aye.
Denise Brewster.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Dennis Keeney.
Aye.
Lori Krenisky.
Aye.
Motion carried.